As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned, the Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
I call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors for a regular meeting. Mr. Powell, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Eisenhour, Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here. Do we have any presentations?
No ma'am.
Any public comment?
No ma'am.
On tonight's consent calendar, we have the minutes adoption. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public hearings?
No ma'am.
Board considerations?
No ma'am.
Anything? This is an easy meeting. Board requesting directives?
Me.
Wow. General manager's update?
I do have a couple of things. I emailed earlier today, I would like to ask the board if you would be interested in entertaining the idea of a James City Service Authority Board of Directors retreat sometime in late April. Got a number of items that I'd like to get some feedback from you on, and a few items I think I'd like to try to give some more detailed updates on. So, I was looking at the end of April, flexible on day, time of day, and location. I was thinking maybe doing it at the JCSA building on Tuning Road, but we can work out the details later, as long as, mainly I just wanted to get a sense from you if you would be willing to do a retreat sometime in late April. Okay.
When will you work to get that scheduled?
Probably tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'll start, at least start the process tomorrow, try and nail down a date as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, alright. The only other item I have is that at the end of your meeting, instead of adjourning, I would ask that you continue this meeting to the 28th for an item related to employee compensation.
Good. Anybody else? Anything? Well, may I have a motion to continue this meeting until 1:00 PM on March 28th, 2023?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll see you then.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Hippel.
Thank you. Alright, call this meeting James City County Board of Supervisors regular meeting. The order at 5:02. Mr. Stevens, you call the roll, please sir.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is vice chair of the board. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District and is chair of the board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney. I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you, sir. Alright, before we do a moment of silence, our pledge leader tonight, I'm lucky, from the Powhatan District, McKennie Ingram, and she is a third grader, Norwich Elementary. And Nanette, her mother is here with us today. Frederick, her father couldn't make it. Jocelyn's here. Hendricks is here, Preston's here, all the Ingrahams, and to support their sister on everything she's doing. Of course, like I said, she's in the Powhatan District, and one day will be voting for me. She has interest in reading, comic books, art, painting, and journaling. And she likes on her sports, she likes martial arts, running, and soccer. And she's also a member of the dance club. So after a moment of silence, if you'll come forward and lead us in a pledge.
You know, one day she might be running for your seat.
She may. I'll tell you everything you need to know.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you. Good job.
Alright, we have another presentation before we start our public comment session. And we're gonna do this a little differently than what we normally do. Normally, I as the chairman get up and read the proclamation. And I thought since Ed had done so much, and Brian's here, his son, had done so much in the county, and helping this board, and showing us when we're right, showing us when we're wrong, and giving us a pat on the back every now and then to congratulate us on milestones that we had accomplished. I thought since all of us have been involved in his life and he and ours, we would take, each would take a piece of the whereas, and in celebrating this. So it's a celebration of the life of Edwin C. Oyer.
Mr. Chair, Brian's brother is here as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I start out, whereas Mr. Edwin C. Oyer gave 22 years of active service to the United States Navy that ended with his retirement in 1973, and?
Whereas after his naval career, Mr. Oyer retired from the automotive industry and as a self-employed businessman, and?
Whereas after his final retirement, Mr. Oyer dedicated much of his time to local and state politics, and?
Whereas Mr. Oyer attended hundreds, I said hundreds, of Board of Supervisor meetings, and always provided thoughtful and meaningful discourse on issues impacting the community, and?
And whereas Mr. Oyer passing away in January of 2023, and his presence in the community will be deeply missed. Now therefore be it resolved that I, the chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia hereby announce Mr. Edwin Oyers for his dedicated service in the community and for taking an active role in our local government. Be it further resolved that we extend sincere condolences to his family and appreciation for his legacy in our community. And witness thereof, I here do set my hand and cause the seal of James City County, Virginia to be affixed this 14th day of March 2023.
I'll be back next month.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the kind words. I saw the last meeting, and we appreciated it. It was kind of unexpected, but the 91, you know, you just don't know. The good thing was, he died quickly, wasn't in pain. I was on one side of him, my wife was on the other. Just before warned, I have inherited the book. I have inherited the library.
Wow.
It's been a long time since I've been down here. I'll be back next month for sure.
That's great.
Thank you for this, and I know Dad would appreciate it. He put a lot of time and effort into the county, a lot of time and effort into Richmond, George Grayson's office, and he was always doing something with it. And you knew when he got up here and he dropped the papers down and the glasses dropped, it reminded you, one of your school teachers, that you were getting ready to hear something, whether you wanted to hear it or not. And as you know, I'm not afraid to come down here and say things. It's been a long time since I've been down, but Dad certainly enjoyed it, and it was hard for him to stop coming. As he started slowing down, there was a lot of things that were, he did a lot, and they just couldn't do it anymore. But he lived a good life, and he's in a good spot, and he's getting his burial at sea as he wanted, and makes him happy, makes us happy. So again, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words. I know that Pop would appreciate that, too. Good and bad, that's the way it rolls. But not to fear, because I've been doing what Quill has been doing to you guys, to York County for many decades. And kudos when you deserve them, and the other ones when you don't. So this is my first time being at your new complex. I came to board meetings with Pop a long time ago, decades ago. Probably when Tommy Norman was on the board. So, appreciate the kind words again, the recognition. Carry on. Thank you. Y'all like to do a photo with the board? Can we do one, Jason? Come on, guys.
Come on.
Come on.
Come on, Brian.
Alright, public comment. Go ahead and open up the public comment. Our first speaker is Peg Borman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. Reineheimer. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor for me to have the opportunity to be here when you're honoring my friend Ed Orr. I'm not quite as political as he was, but I'm trying to talk trash, so here I am, talking trash. I'm Peg Borman. I live at, I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot. And I'm gonna come to you again this afternoon to talk a little bit of trash. You know the story of how you never get the second chance to make the first impression? Well, that's what I think about when I, and maybe that's what you think about, when you exit the interstate, or freeways, or wherever you're going into the next town. Do you ever form that first impression of the area that you're entering? I know I do. And if it's clean, or if it's totally trashed with litter, then I think about the fact that the broken syndrome comes to, broken window syndrome comes to my mind. And when I see them, the roadways, it's got all these fast food wrappers, and bottles, and cans, and cups, and bags, and everything else. These people must not think very highly of their community to let this happen to them. And so, and I know that the exits and entrance ramps are probably the worst things of all. But also, when we get off 199, there's that trash that's there, too. But I take pride in our community, our county. And that's why I've worked so hard all these years, is try to make it better. But positive vibes encourages positive actions, and, which makes me want to encourage everybody to sign up for a part in our upcoming annual spring cleanup. And I gave each one of you all one of these. And to y'all that didn't see it, they're somehow yonder on the, that can be picked up. And also, we also have the Great American Cleanup, which you can clean up anywhere in the area, and from March 24th and 25th. So, I'd like to have everybody try to get involved in this cleanup, because it is an opportunity that we have to make our county better, and a better place to live and work and play. And let's, I want to keep it that way if possible, but I know that everybody says, well, we clean it up one day, and 15 minutes later, it's messed up again. But we have to be consistent, and it's gonna, and that's the problem. A lot of people, a lot of these areas around here are not consistent with it. And I pride ourselves in James City being so consistent in keeping it clean. So, we can all play a big part in this. And I thank you for listening to me talk trash again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorsey Smith?
Welcome. Good afternoon, members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share some thanks with you. A number of years ago, my name is Dorsey Smith, by the way, and at 105 Lake Drive in Lakewood, off of Jamestown Road. A number of years ago, I, along with many of the neighbors from Lakewood, came to the board to share our concern about the ever-increasing number of accidents that were occurring on Jamestown Road in front of the entrance to Lakewood and Neckland. And we wanted to see what could be done about that. And thankfully, Mrs. Larson became very involved in that process. She talked to us, she came to investigate, and she involved Mr. Rossi Carroll from VDOT, who also investigated, initiated some traffic studies. And the result of that initially were to increase the size of the posted speed limit signs on both north and southbound sides of Jamestown Road. Unfortunately, the accidents continued to happen. So I brought this back to the attention of Mrs. Larson and Mr. Carroll, and more traffic studies were initiated. They took a look at this. And the very successful result of that effort was the installation of a blinking speed limit sign on the northbound side of Jamestown Road near the entrance to Neckland. And I'm happy to say that since the installation of that sign, the number of accidents that were occurring in that busy area of Jamestown Road have significantly decreased. So I'm here to thank you for that effort and for that positive outcome. Secondly, I'm an avid cyclist, and there are many avid cyclists in our area, and I often ride on Jamestown Road in order to connect to the Capitol Trail. And unfortunately, even though there are bicycle lanes on the road, the bicycle lanes have been rapidly disappearing because of the encroachment of vegetation and the accumulation of debris. And I brought this to the attention of Mrs. Larson and Mr. Carroll, and I'm happy to say that since those conversations, that that debris has been removed, the bicycle lanes are back to their original dimensions, and therefore it's a much safer travel for pedestrians and cyclists, and really for that matter, for motorists as well. So I'm here just to share thanks for, these would be our great examples of our local government and the Virginia Department of Transportation working for the benefit of our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for being such an advocate, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it.
Well done.
Andy Kason.
Good afternoon. My name is Andy Kason. I'm the treasurer of WJCEA, and I'm also a teacher at Jamestown High School. What I'm here to talk about is school funding. I'm here to advocate for the, for fully funding the WJCC budget shortfall. And as we go into the joint meeting on Friday this week, I have a question for the board, and that is, what do our students deserve? Our students deserve teachers and instructional assistants who do not get off their shift at their second job the night before they're teaching. Our students deserve an education, no matter if they have a learning disability, or they don't speak English. And they deserve the professionals who can meet their needs, not long-term subs, or any other unqualified people, right? We, our students deserve to flourish, and they can't do that without dedicated and qualified educators. Our students deserve field trips. Our students deserve to arrive home before 5:30. And we, what this requires is money, and it requires to give people the dignity and the ability to do a good job and to serve our students. We're here, WJCEA is here to demand the schools that our students deserve. When you attend the 17th meeting, come with the understanding of what we are up against. We are up against the COVID-missed learning. We are up against preparing students for 24th century jobs. I, as an English teacher, now have to train students to compete with artificial intelligence. That's kind of scary. And we can't do that job unless we hire the best quality educators. And that's why I'm here today to tell you to please fund the WJCC budget shortfall. We, at WJCC schools, we do a great job. I'm immensely proud of my students and what they've been able to accomplish this year. I have freshmen this year, and they're doing a great job. They are learning. They are making up that learning loss, and I am so proud of them. But I also see a lot of struggle, and I also see places where we're failing students. And that's because we don't have the qualified staff. And I'm not the only one. Talk to any teacher in WJCC schools, and they'll tell you the same thing. We don't give instructional assistants the dignity of not, of having this job as their sole job. Many employees have second jobs to make up. We don't have the, we don't pay our bus drivers enough to attract enough bus drivers so that we can have field trips, adequate field trips. And I know as an after-school activity person myself, I've had to drive the van many times, and that could limit some students from participating because there wasn't a bus driver there. And that's why elementary school students come home so late. We don't have enough bus drivers to adequately serve all the elementary schools so that students can get home at a reasonable time. And it's, that's, and that's a huge quality of life issue for us in our community. And also notice that in WJCC's budget, the schools are one of our biggest employers in the community. And I constantly think to myself, what kind of community are we building together if we are not treating the people who take care of our children every single day with the dignity of having a pension, a pension that can sustain them, right? Because our retirement plans are all based on what we make right now. So please, have these thoughts in your mind. Have the thoughts of what it takes to truly educate our children for the future. And what kind of future are we building here in James City County? Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Lipscomb? Oh, that's Fransc.
Fransc.
It was on my... Alan Parman? Barham? Yes. Sorry about that. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. My name is Allyn Parm. I live in 634 Chelsea Place in Newport News, so I do drive a little bit to get to work every day. I am the current president of WJCEA, and I am a social studies teacher here in WJCC. Myself, along with fellow supporters of education, are here tonight as we advocate in favor of our budget of needs in WJCC. With our school facing issues in teacher turnover, special education positions left unfilled, transportation, staff issues, turnover, and et cetera, et cetera. And I have a full list that I could go on, but I have a lot of papers to grade tonight, so I shall email you that information later this evening. With the joint meeting approaching very soon with our school board and the city council, please know that this budget is vital to us. This 10% that we have been advocating for is vital to us. It is vital to our staff, it is vital to our classrooms, it is vital to our students, and it is vital to our supporters. Our schools in WJCC should never be in the red, and we have one right now. We should never have staff concerned about being in the red or being in the yellow. Our schools, our staff, our students can benefit from this budget, especially funding receiving for our multilingual learners, where our program is expanding each and every year, for our hourly workers, our instructional assistants, and our teacher assistants as well. The more shortfalls we have in our community, the more sacrifices to the quality of our students' education will be which is needed at this time in WJCC. Our schools are facing unprecedented challenges, and as a community, both James City County and the city of Williamsburg, we need to be coming together. We need to be coming together to help face the issues of staff burnout, decrease in staff morale, and teacher turnover. We, as a county, should not be losing our teachers to neighboring school divisions such as York and Newport News. And I leave here today with a quote, "Education is the passport to the future; for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." Thank you for hearing our comments, and we look forward to your joint meeting.
Thank you. Don Forget?
My name's Don Forget, 110 Deerwood Drive off Jolly Pond Road. Neighbor.
Thank you.
I've been a public school teacher for 20 years, 18 in this division, and I love this community and I love its schools. I'm here to tell you that teachers are exhausted and burned out. Teaching is my calling and my love, but for the first time in my career, I'm struggling with how many more years I have left in me. We are trying our very best to manage an obscene amount of assessments, meetings, and new initiatives. We're losing aides, aides that are crucial to our teaching, to filling absences and covering special education minutes. We're dealing with an unprecedented amount of needy students with severe, severe behaviors and academic challenges. In my 18 years here, I've seen cuts to curriculum, staffing, and an increase in class sizes. We're losing strong, reliable support staff and teachers to the stress of high demands, lack of manpower, and higher pay in neighboring counties. We need more staff, and we need a living and competitive wage. Please fully fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Emery?
Good evening. My name is Laura Emery, and I do reside at 4635 Town Creek in Newtown. And I am here again as a member of the community to raise my voice in support of the budget shortfall for the WJCC teachers and school employees. There are many reasons why these hardworking yet underpaid teachers need a pay raise. For one, to help offset the ever increasing rise in their healthcare premiums. But closing this budget shortfall also helps to pay for school resources and support staff that allow our teachers the tools they need every day to help serve our students. Now, the WJCC school board has given its support for the increase. Now, we ask for your support and help to help these school employees before we lose more teachers to other districts and communities. As you've heard, you know, there are better paying jobs in other districts, and we want those teachers here in our backyard serving our children. And remember, the simple act of supporting our teachers equals supporting our children's education right now more than ever. These kids need stability, continuity, qualified educators in every classroom. You do have it in your means to take actions for this necessary pay raise, and the community is watching. Thank you for your time and appreciate your support.
Thank you. Marco Sardine?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Marco Sardi. I reside at 4008 Governor's Square in Williamsburg. When did we stop trusting professionals? Somewhere after saving a penny, we began to replace the confidence with distrust, and we valued our personal opinions and suppositions higher than informed decisions. I recently had the pleasure of speaking with the county clerk on the matter of the school budget for next year, and I trust that he knew a great deal on the matter because he was experienced and trained in that matter. I believed him when he said the county had no obligation to fund any raise. In fact, this board only has a fractional obligation to fund any budget but before it. I also believe him when he said the county was in great shape financially. Homeowners saw a 1% drop in their property tax, and still, there is more in our coffers than this time last year. It sounded to me like things are looking up for the county, and it gladdens me to hear that there are several investments in the budget, including a $100 million plan to construct a new governmental building. I imagine these will make James City County an attractive place in which to move for those looking for a quiet place to live out their retirement without worrying about the stress of things like quality schools or families with children. Unfortunately, while the board is within their rights to not fund any of this, and in fact, is not obligated to fund a great deal of our requested budget, I challenge you to see the short-mindedness behind such a statement. Neighboring divisions are already granting an 8.2% raise, like in York County. York, where 50% of their budget goes towards schools because they recognize the best way to attract long-term, multi-generational growth is through families. And one of the leading factors in families determining a home is the quality of the schools. So please, save your pennies. If you ask HR in WJCC, they will assure you that everything is fine. We have filled all of our positions, but that is a half-truth. What they mean to say is we have filled all legally required positions to meet the bare minimum in the operation of our schools. Special education teachers are overburdened, with some having 20 or 30% above their recommended caseload, and then being told they need to make up those hours when those students are pulled for other interventions. Special education staff are hardworking, but they are not magicians who can pull extra hours out of a hat. In my school, a student who is deaf had to go to all of her classes without an interpreter because there were no substitutes available. But that was okay because legally, we only needed to provide an interpreter some of the time to meet the requirement. We settled for that. I have to look at my students and say, don't worry, here at WJCC, we work hard to provide you with the bare minimum. Times are tough, and your education was deemed a sacrifice we could live with. Better to teach them early, as some members of the board here have stated, that yes is yes and no is no, and we need to grow up and get used to that. When we, the professionals, are telling you there's a problem, we're not saying it because it doesn't matter. We are hiring positions for next year. We've currently hired 32. That's an exact number. But what I don't know is how many are leaving, and we won't know for some time. We were told this was a national issue, and nothing could be done. We were told the state would solve any budget shortfall. There was nothing to be done locally. The problem is too big, we should give up and leave it to higher powers. Another thing I'll be glad to tell my students, I'm sorry, class, I was pulled for the third time this week to cover a shortfall in staffing, so I don't have anything prepared today. There's nothing I can do to fix it. Hopefully, the problem solves itself. It's the WJCC way. What happened to accepting responsibility? If not for ourselves, then for our children? For surely, we can still agree to hold the statement true, do better by your children than was done for you. Better, not the minimum. WJCC was once known as the premier division, and now we have schools teetering on the edge of accreditation, and turnover is through the roof. I would love to go to work and just do my job. It is meaningful, and it is the most important thing I will ever do. I get great satisfaction from that. But I cannot sit by and watch opportunities for having the best staff and the best resources slip through the cracks from disgruntled residents. I'm sorry to them if they feel it's not worth it, but I know my students are worth every cent. Trust me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karen Little?
My name's Karen Little. I live at 118 Smokehouse Lane in James City County. I am a Williamsburg teacher and have been for a very long time. You can tell that. So is my husband. He is retiring this year. My children went to Lafayette, and they're very successful. One is ROTC at Cornell, full ride, and the other one is getting her doctorate after having graduated from tech right away, working on a doctorate in plant genetics. Both of those kids, they are where they are because of the people that were willing to work with them. My daughter had a little checkered career in high school, but her teachers bent over backwards, they saw her promise and decided they were willing to help. They had the bandwidth to help. They could be there for those students. I will not be here much longer. My husband has decided to go simply because the burden is too much. They're constantly being called to sub in other classrooms. We don't have people covering classrooms, and so he's going to go. I'll be going in a little bit. I'm worried about my colleagues, my younger colleagues that I see. I teach with a group of teachers who have 17 years experience between the five of them. They're new, they're fresh, they want to be here, they're already talking about being someplace else because they're looking at their financial burden, they're looking at how hard it is to work in our system, they're looking at the shortfalls we have, they have special needs children in their rooms who aren't getting the services they need, we have teaching assistants trying to do that. We are stretched so thin, and they're at the beginning, and they're watching this and deciding, maybe this isn't for us. The more you stretch our people in the building, the less they can deliver to each and every child. Our, our school is so funny, there is a big wall across from the principal's office, and it's almost like it's a battle plan. She'll get the report of who's not in the building that day, and she is deciding how to fill the holes. We get an email every single day of the holes and who are filling the holes because there are not subs, there aren't enough people to cover the hours for our sped team. This cannot continue like this and have the premier school system that we were just talking about. I've been here a very long time, and I've never seen it like this. But we shouldn't lose our teachers to surrounding communities. It's one thing what the nation says. It's one thing there is a teacher shortage, we know there is a teacher shortage, but to lose our teachers to neighboring communities because they see something that is better for them, they are getting paid more, they're not being burdened as much, we need to make sure we're looking at the funding, can, are we doing all we can for this school system that my kids loved, and I want all the other kids to have the same experience? So thank you very much for considering that.
Thank you. All right, any other speaker card?
Chairman, members of the board, a little unusual, out of order here, but the Branscombe case that comes up later is a board consideration, so this is our only chance to speak necessarily. We're, of course, here and glad to answer questions. I really just wanted to report to you all, and I think you're aware of this, but since the boards deferred the case back in November, Branscombe did go out and vigorously pursue Walmart in trying to gain an access across the Walmart property out to Greenmount Parkway. After a number of different efforts and maneuvers, we finally got to the right people, but unfortunately, the answer that came back was a flat-out no. We're not going to give you access across our property just because we don't have to. So we're back to where we were, and for all the reasons we talked about at our last meeting, we would urge you to approve the case. But we're, of course, here and glad to discuss it if you would like us to, when it comes up as a board consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other speaker? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment session, and consent calendars, we have nothing for the consent calendars. Public hearings, our PC rep is Tim O'Connor, and he's here.
He's here.
There he is. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it very much. All right, we'll move into public hearings. Our first public hearing is AFD-22-00191245, Stewart Road, Barn Swamp, AFD withdrawal. Thomas?
Thanks, sir.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. Mr. Tim Mills has applied to withdraw approximately 23.84 acres of his 52.15 acre parcel from the Barn Swamp Agricultural and Forested District. This parcel is addressed 1245 Stewart's Road, is zoned A1 agricultural, and is designated for rural lands on the adopted comprehensive plan. In 2022, the county notified property owners of the impending renewal period and the need for applicants to submit their request for withdrawal in writing multiple times. Specifically, the county mailed every property owner within an AFD a letter on May 25th of 2022 and August 17th, 2022, informing each property owner they needed to submit a written withdrawal request prior to the September 13th board meeting. No written request was submitted to the county by the applicant prior to the board's meeting. This means that this request is outside the renewal period. Withdrawal requests outside of the renewal period are considered per the criteria listed in the Board of Supervisors policy governing the withdrawal of properties from AFDs. The criteria are as follows. Number one, the request is caused by a change in circumstances that could not have been anticipated at the time application was made for inclusion within the district. And this has historically been interpreted as death of a property owner, which happily is not the case in this instance. Criteria number two, the request would serve a public purpose as opposed to the proprietary interest of the landowner that could not otherwise be realized upon expiration of the AFD. And staff interprets a public purpose as using the land for a public facility such as a school or fire station. The applicant is proposing a minor residential subdivision, which is not considered a public purpose. Criteria number three, the request would not cause damage or disruption to the existing district, and the AFD would continue to meet the minimum acreage requirements if this withdrawal is approved. And finally, criteria number four, if the request for withdrawal is in conjunction with a proposal to convert the land use of a property to a different use than is currently in place on the property, the new land use would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And the purpose of this application is to allow for development of a minor subdivision on the parcel. Residential development is discouraged within the rural lands designation on the comprehensive plan. As such, staff finds this application would not cause a disruption to the AFD but does not meet the other criteria. Based on the evaluation of the criteria listed in the board's policy governing the withdrawal of properties from AFDs, staff does recommend that the board deny this application. At its January meeting, the AFD committee voted seven to zero to approve this withdrawal request. At its February meeting, the Planning Commission voted five to two against a motion to recommend approval of this request. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I believe Mr. Mills is here tonight as well. Thank you.
Do you know why the AFD? Did, were you, did you happen to be there for that, or to know what the, was it because it was relatively, it was four lots, so it wasn't a huge impact? Was that the reason for the okay on their end?
I was at the meeting. I don't know if I could summarize exactly the different views of supporting it. I don't think there were any major concerns raised by the AFD regarding this issue, but I don't have the specifics, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That, that pretty much, I think, sums it up, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
Are we going to hear from Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Okay.
I might have some.
Any for staff?
Not sure yet.
Do you want to wait?
I'd like to wait, please.
Okay. All right. PC report. Mr. O'Connor, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. As always, Mr. Weisong does a great job summarizing the cases in front of you. I think the only thing I would add is that, you know, generally, the Planning Commission has been has been reluctant to allow withdrawals out of the AFD, out of cycle for the board's adopted policy, so I think that's been generally consistent over the years. So clearly that's in your purview to do that, but I think the Planning Commission felt compelled to, to deny the request just to be consistent for that, and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mitch.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Mills.
Evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Timothy Mills, my wife Joan and I, and we currently live at 306 The Main West in the First Colony Subdivision in James City County. We hope to relocate at 1245 Stewart's Road in Lenexa, Virginia in the next two years. I also have with me some of the members of my family. My oldest son Andrew and his wife Catherine are here. My oldest daughter Carolyn and her husband Rob are here. My youngest daughter Abby and her husband Andrew are here, and my middle son Greg and his wife Beth are here, and my youngest son Matthew is not here, was not able to make it. We have five children, four adult children who are married, and one who is still in college. I, I first wanna apologize really for even having to be here tonight. I know, you know, this, uh, is, there's a misunderstanding, I'll call it a misunderstanding on the technicality, but we're here and, and unfortunately I have to go through a lot of detail because I think it's important for you to get a feel for sort of where we are, how we got here, and what our plans are with this piece of property. And I just wanna be clear, the reason we're here tonight has to do with misunderstanding between planning's notification to me, and to me really, it's on me, and our understanding of what was required for submitting a written notification, which we, we did do, and we see this really as a technicality in, in sort of where we are today. And I wanna paint a little bit of picture of where our family is too as it get to the end of this because it gives you some context. Can you pull up the survey, the, the one with the six lots on it? Looks like this. I wanna address some of the lot numbers as we go through this. This one. It's in the packet. No? Okay, you can pull up the four lots then. It is in your packet, and I saw your packet, 200 pages, and thank you for, thank you for everything that you do. That's a lot to get ready for. But there's a bit of history. My, my wife and I, as a younger couple, moved to James City County almost 35 years ago and decided to settle down here. We wanna stay here, and I think we plan on being here for the rest of our lives. We have five children, which I said four, which are married, one in college. They are all currently now residents of James City County. I worked for many James City County employers. I ran my own firm for 20 years as consulting engineering firm. Over the years, my wife and I and now our adult children have served and participated in countless community events, volunteered for countless boards and religious and nonprofit organizations. Three years ago, my oldest son Andrew approached me and knowing that in the past we had a family vision of obtaining a larger piece of property where our family could possibly reside closer to each other, he thought that maybe now was the time to make this happen as we were unable to do this several decades earlier because we just did not have the resources. After Joan and I pulling our children, every, surprisingly, everybody was on board with trying to make this vision a reality. So we started to look. Three years ago, we looked in Suffolk, we looked in New Kent, we looked in James City County, we looked in York County, we looked as far away as in Rico, New Kent, Charles City, Gloucester, and even Matthews. And I remember very vividly one Sunday afternoon driving back from looking at a beautiful property in Matthews, we were going over the Coleman Bridge, and my wife turned to me and said, "Tim, we are not moving to Gloucester, we are not moving to Matthews, we need to stay close to home." And so we narrowed our search. We found Stewart's Farm for sale. This piece of property is 52 acres, this is only about half of it, it's a small farm. It was in the Stewart's family and passed from generation to generation for at least 150 years. Part of the property, this one part, a little bit less than half, is in the Barn Swamp AFD. We thought the property could work for us as a family and began pursuing the possibility three years ago of pursuing possibly purchasing it. It's a bit of a funny piece because it's one parcel, but it's actually two pieces. There's a little piece that separates the two parcels, if you will, but it's one parcel where the Ron and Susan Leontuck live, and then the back of the property, what you're looking up there, really mostly borders Newport News because Newport News owns the reservoir, which is in the back and part of the, the Barn Swamp property back there, and they own up to elevation 30 feet. The property was for sale as a land deal as the 100-plus-year-old farmhouse was considered too far gone to save, and whoever bought the farm would certainly demolish the house and the cemetery and start from scratch. As an engineer who's worked for years with CW and other places, Joan and I thought otherwise and became very much interested in the idea of actually restoring this piece of James City County history. It is a classic, very small, very humble, what they call folk Victorian farmhouse. We have been told that this piece of property, like I said, has been farmed for 150 years. Sarah F. Stewart, born August 31st, 1834, died May 23rd, 1910. George Stewart, born March 1st, 1861. Wyatt Stewart, born 1850. Prince Edward Stewart, born 1855. Walker Stewart, born 1889. Mary Stewart, born 1878. All have headstones on the property. Prior to purchasing the Stewart's Farm property, we worked with James City County Planning Division, which was a pleasant experience for five months from October 2020 through March 2021 in order to get the necessary approvals that we needed to subdivide the property in the future for our family. The end result of this five-month effort, which included meetings with the DRB, with the Planning Commission, was that the Planning Division issued to us an adopted master plan on March 5th, 2021, two years ago. You're looking at part of that master plan. If you look at what, I think this is on your screen, I assume, so Lot 1 is on the left, and it's 2, 3, 4, and Lot 5 and 6 are the other side of the property, which is not an AFD but is where the farmhouse is currently located. We understood at the time before purchasing the property that the upper portion of the parcel, property was in the AFD, and prior to subdividing the property, it had to be taken out of the AFD. The AFD was scheduled to expire on October 31st, 2022, last October, a year and a half after we purchased the property, if we were to purchase it. The adopted master plan provided to us by county included a total of six lots with an average density of almost nine acres, which is three times the minimum lot size at the time that we went through purchasing the property. As far back as October of 2020 and on multiple times since then, we made it clear in writing, working with our planner at the time, who has now been switched out with another planner, that our plan was to complete the restoration of the farmhouse and to subdivide the property after it came out of the AFD in 2022. This is clear in multiple emails over the past few years. Our attorneys provided James City County Attorney's Office in last October with over 100 pages of correspondence that relate to this. We closed the property in April of 2021, almost two years ago. For most of 2021 and 2022, we have been working diligently in the first phase of making repairs to the farmhouse and getting it ready for a full restoration, which won't begin until and earliest would be the end of next year and, and into 2025. We have replaced the foundation entirely, we have repaired extensive rotten termite damage, replaced the heating system with a more efficient dual-fuel system, replaced the plumbing system, and a more robust restoration will not be completed until we move, are ready to move into the house in a couple of years. We also are replacing this year a dilapidated barn with a new barn as we speak. As we have said from the beginning, we plan on restoring the farmhouse to its original state, restoring the Stewart family cemetery, and if possible, obtaining a Virginia Department of Historic Resources certification for the property. We are still working in that direction and that, we've been very clear on that since the beginning. We have, we plan to have and continue to farm the, the croplands, and will rename the farm La Flouter Fields Farm in honor of my late father, Kenneth Bernard Mills, who lived on La Flouter Fields Lane in Mullen in the UK. During last summer, the summer of 2022, we retained the services of a licensed surveyor to prepare the subdivision plat. We also contacted the tax assessor's office so that we could be prepared to pay the rollback taxes, which will be imposed upon us once the property comes out of the AFD and is subdivided. We contacted our planner last summer to let him know that we were still proceeding with our plan as originally stated previously, and were even encouraged to meet with planning to review our subdivision plat prior to its submittal. We shared photographs of the restoration process of the house as the work was continuing. During last summer, I met with and walked a timber lot, which is the lot you're looking at, it's a timber lot now, with a representative, with the Virginia Department of Forestry to obtain a forestry management plan and so that we could be better stewards of what we've purchased. In August 17th, 2022, received a letter from the county reminding us to submit in writing our intent to remove our property from the AFD. As we were not very familiar with the process and did not put the property in the AFD to begin with because we bought the property as it was in the AFD, we were not, and this is on me, I mean, we're not that interested in the public process because we were planning on removing it from the AFD in writing. In our opinion, and this is my opinion, and my attorney can speak to this as well, the communication from the planning department could have been clearer. It was not, it was not clear to me that we, we, we had a deadline to submit the letter by. We were just, in our minds, had the October 31st, 2022 date. On September 26th, 2022, I personally went to the planning office to ask them to clarify how and where to send my letter to request that the property would be removed from the AFD. At that time, I was notified by staff that the Board of Supervisors had already renewed our property in the AFD at the September 2022 meeting, nine days prior to my arrival at the planning office, and that was told I'd have to wait four more years to do the subdivision. I did not understand that this was gonna take place. I was quite surprised, but I went ahead and submitted my letter that day anyway. I'll tell you, I'm a professional engineer, I spent my career working on structures and buildings and working with building departments, engineers, architects, and contractors, and planning just speaks a little bit of a different language. They speak legalese, I speak engineer, and we have dates and times and are very clear when, when bids are due and when paperwork needs to be submitted, and, and I just did not, I thought that the planning letter, and I've read it many, many times, was not as clear as it needed to be. Despite that, I submitted the letter, we did, got no response from the county. We submitted our plats on October 13th. We submitted a letter a month and a half before the AFD was supposed to expire. The county did not respond to our letter of September 26th, so we submitted a second letter of November 18th, again requesting that we come out of the AFD, and that began this process of going to the AFD Committee, going to the planning, and now coming back here to you all tonight. I will tell you that the AFD Advisory Board, as you heard just now, when we attended that meeting, you voted unanimously that they recommended that our property come out of the AFD and understood the misunderstanding. Planning maybe was not as understanding, and they thought that we were setting some kind of precedent. And I wanna be clear that we're not trying to set a precedent, we have never changed our plan, we have never changed our minds, we have been open about our plan for the past two and a half years, and either due to misinterpretation or unclear notification request from planning, we're here on a technicality regarding notification, and according to planning is nine days late, and according to us is a month and a half early regarding removing our property from the AFD. So that's where we are, and I, I just wanna talk real quick about my children. My, my son Greg and his wife have recently moved back from Tyler, Texas as part of this plan. They are ready to move forward with building a property, a house, probably on Lot number two or three, and that will probably take two-year period given the current conditions for financing and everything else. My, my daughter Carolyn is currently living in the farmhouse. I need her to build a house on Lot number four so we can restore the house, sell our house in First Colony and retire to the farm. And my daughter Abby has recently moved back from Oregon, and she is currently living in temporarily housing, and she is planning on building a house on Lot 5. And so over the next couple of years, you will see probably two, maybe three, but probably two starter modest homes and a restoration of the farmhouse, and the last two lots are Lot 1 and 2, my son Andrew already owns a home in James City County, so we may or may not build there, and my son Matthew, he's still in college, who knows what he's gonna do. So I am requesting that maybe a certain amount of grace that we come out of the AFD based on those facts. And I can answer any questions, and Getty's here also that can address some of these concerns. I'd add only one thing to Mr. Mills' comments, and that is, I think this is a fairly unique case in that it's not like many withdrawals between the renewal periods in that this is some new idea that came to Mr. Mills and he just wants to do it now. This is clearly something he's been working on for several years, everybody knew the plan that was involved. For the reasons Mr. Mills stated, he didn't understand the time that this letter was supposed to be submitted. It was no secret that he was gonna pull this out of the AFD, and I think it's just an unfortunate circumstance, and I don't think he'd be setting a precedent to provide relief to Mr. Mills in this situation. Like I said, it's not like he's come up with a new development idea and just wants to immediately do it and pull the land out between cycles, so we'd appreciate any consideration. Thanks.
If I could, Mr. Getty, I was just looking at the map that's up here, and up in the corner, the date of October 2022. Where does that fit into the timeline? It says Stewart's Road and Racefield Drive. It says October 11th, 2022.
I think that's when we submitted the subdivision. Yeah, the preliminary subdivision plat. He, he worked and got an approval through Planning Commission and the Planning Department back a year and a half prior.
Yeah, we've, we've already submitted our plat for the subdivision, we got the comments back from county, and the primary comment from the county is the property's gotta come out of the AFD, and then we can get approval and do the subdivision.
So this survey was done in that process then?
Yes, in the subdivision process.
And just to understand, we had acted on September 13th to renew the AFDs. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, you, you, 13th, and I submitted my letter on September 26th. And I wasn't paying attention, I mean, I don't, I mean, I hate to say that, but I don't think a lot of citizens watch this, but, I mean, I, I don't.
Well, there goes that.
Is this, so this is your first experience in dealing with the AFD program?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, we didn't, our signatures are not on any, on any of the AFD documents. I mean, I, I'll tell you from, I mean, I don't understand legalese as a thing, I would think that, that, and I, I'm not giving you advice, but, but this thing automatically rolls over, I would think if you have a new property owner, someone's purchased a property into AFD, that it would be a requirement to get that new property signature to roll it into the AFD again, but that's, that's me.
Can I just ask for a question clarification? I'm a little confused now about exactly what the subparcels would, would involve. It sounded to me as if you indicated that definitely two would be built on by your children, and one you would occupy.
They would, they would all, so we have five children.
Right.
And, and there's gonna be six lots.
Right.
So my wife and I will have the biggest lot, which is, and we're gonna continue to farm that, and my five children will obtain the five remaining lots. What I'm saying is.
They won't necessarily live on them, is that?
Yeah, I, I mean, my son, my youngest son's 19 years old, who knows what he's gonna do, but he's currently at CNU and he's, he's an intern at Langley, NASA Langley, which is fantastic, but the two lots on the right, I would think over the next two to three years, and then maybe even, maybe a year and a half.
years, and then maybe even, maybe a year and a half, uh, and then the lot that you don't see, which is next to the farmhouse, you could possibly see a 1,600 square foot, 2,000 square foot starter home.
With your children, not, not selling it to someone else, you, you, you planned for your children to?
This has been a family vision, if you will. And, and some people, you know, think that's a wonderful thing, and some people's like, how could you possibly live next? Uh, we have a pretty strong tie.
It's good and bad.
We have a pretty strong tie. And, and we're not planning on selling any of these lots, um, other than to family, right, to my kids. Uh, we'll, we'll give them a discount on it, but, um, it, it is a family effort, uh, for sure. And, uh, um, I mean, uh, we've got seven grandchildren. I, I mean, I can't, I'm, I'm going to retire next year for, waiting four years for me and my wife. I mean, that's, it could be a huge chunk of time for these grandkids that are one, two, three years old. That's a big chunk of their childhood that, that, you know, I, I don't know what we'll do if we can't do this. We may move somewhere else.
Mr. Mills. One point I would emphasize is none of these lots are, he's not doing this to sell any of them. They're all going to be reserved for family.
It sounds like, um, as you plan this and we're going through the process and putting this together and, and listening to you, you know, you're working with the county and, and staff was working with you, and, okay, you can do this, you can do that, let's change this, let's move this. And, and basically came up with this plan. And then I can, I can almost see how, you know, staff sends out a letter and says, hey, you've got to do this. Well, y'all bought into this. I didn't realize I had to do this, or I missed a letter, or I misplaced a letter, or, you know, or just didn't, it just didn't, I'm building a subdivision, basically, for my family, a family subdivision, in a way. So you're, am I correct to think, you're thinking, okay, if, if the date it comes out, we know we're going to do this, it's just going to come out. But the county's looking at it as far as, okay, we sent you a letter, you should have told us you definitely wanted out. So I, I think it was a kind of communication.
Well, yeah, I, I think there's several things. Number one, obviously, we never put the property in the AFD because we're not familiar with that process at all. Um, in my mind, yeah, we're taking the property out, so I don't need to worry about the AFD process, I just need to write them a letter. I got the letter. I'm not saying I didn't get the letter. I read the letter, read the letter again. I'm like, well, I, I, I don't really need to participate in that process. I'm going to get, I'm going to submit my letter to the county. I'm a month and a half early. I didn't realize you guys, excuse me, that this board had renewed it without our knowledge. And again, that, that's been our whole plan, and, and we can't, well, I mean, I, I just can't imagine waiting four years at this point with where my kids are and where we.
Yeah. And I can, I can see a little bit as far as I bought into this. It's like land, land is being timbered. When you buy into it, they're going to timber it, and there's a certain thing, and, and you bought the whole piece of land, but somebody already agreed to timber it prior to you getting it. The same with the AFD, you know, you, somebody else had connected it to the AFD, and then you bought the whole thing. So not really being in the very front of it and going, let's put this in the AFD, it was still somewhat confusing to you because you're looking at it going, I'm cutting these lots up, I'm going to put this for the family. And the AFD really wasn't in your mind as much.
I mean, not at all. And, and, I mean, I hate to say this, but my, I guess, if, if I, if we don't do this and we end up having to sell the property and go to New Can or somewhere else, um, I still have the right to subdivide it after AFD expires in a, in a few more years, then I would sell the lots, probably to a developer, and, and then I'd, you know, do something else. And, and that's not what I want to do. And I'm sure they would take that farmhouse and scrape the ground clear and start, build six McMansions. Uh, but that's not our intent. I mean, we've been in, they're changing, I've been 35 years. All my kids have been away and have come back, and they want to stay here, and they want to settle down here. And this is our vision. All right, any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public hearing, and I'll look to the board for direction and a motion or discussion.
Could I ask staff, uh, one quick question?
Yes.
And that has to do with, um, and, and Mr. Mills is, I, I, I fully understand his, um, his, this is, this is a family project and everything. But what we have to look at on, on these issues, the long term, is, is that, uh, what happens to the land ultimately, long, long term? Um, under the, under the current, maybe Mr., I don't know, um, whether Mr. Holt would be the one to do it or not, but, um, under the current situation, um, the, the, the two parcels total 52 acres, uh, one of them, I guess, is, is less than 25. Is the other one over 25, or is it, or are these both, uh, uh, basically because of the plat, uh, protected under the previous set, uh, three acre minimum?
Because of the affirmative action from the planning commission on the layout and the exception requests, they are permitted to do the three acre minimum.
Second question is, these, these lots now will average about eight, seven, eight acres, something like that. Um, once they are subdivided to these, these lots, what is the, uh, ability to, uh, in the future, further subdivide them down to three acres? Or, or does that go away with, with this subdivision?
My understanding is that they could only subdivide in a manner that fits in with what the planning commission approved.
Okay.
So I don't believe that they would be able to then subdivide further.
All right. And the, the reason for it is, is not that the, the family would, but, you know, somewhere like down the line, these are now plated lots. And if 20, 30, 40 years from now, somebody owns these and wants to re-subdivide them. What I wanted to make sure is what the limitation would be on that.
I'll add to that further. At that point, it would become a major subdivision. You couldn't re-subdivide them.
Okay.
At that point, because then you trigger the major subdivision.
So what's there is what's there.
What's there, okay.
That's all that can be done.
And family subdivision would not be permitted on any of those lots?
It's not the application that's.
I understand that, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, sort of projecting into the future.
Um, under the way that the subdivision ordinance is currently written, a future lot owner could request a, an SUP for a family subdivision to be approved from the board.
It would require an SUP?
Correct.
On, on, just one lot, they could do that potentially?
On any of these lots, somebody could, could.
But it's an SUP.
And apply for a family subdivision is.
But it's an SUP.
Down to one acre.
Okay.
That would be a discretion, discretionary approval from the board.
Come back to us. Any other questions?
I would, um, for, I'm sure someone will make a motion, but, um, you know, if, if, with the circumstances going on with this, as far as not being the original person that put this in, you know, and the subdivision, yes. But, um, but the AFD, you know, not the original one. If it was the original person that put it in the AFD, and then we renewed it and wanted to take it back out, I would have some angst on that because I'd be like, you put it in, you knew what was going on, you knew the rules, you knew what we're trying to accomplish. And then a month or two later, you want to take it out. But with not being the original person that put it in and understanding everything that went into putting it in the AFD and working with the county as far as, I, this is what my plan is, and going through the planning commission and getting that approved and moving it forward, I could see where, you know, I think I'm doing everything right. Should I know more? Should I not? Um, we sent a letter, what we were supposed to do as far as the county, but, you know, when you're moving through the process, you think I've got a subdivision for my family that I'm putting in. You know, I could see where you could trip and not realize, oh, I've got to send something in to say, pull it out now. I know it's not due for another month or so, but pull it out ahead of time, what they're thinking. So, you know, I would have a tendency to give lenient on this as far as the confusion and what was going on with it during the process, not by anybody's fault or anybody's direction, because the county was doing what they were supposed to do and, and following through and putting everything in place, and, and the owner was doing what they were supposed to do. And I think it just got somewhere, there was a miscommunication or a misunderstanding or something that, that caused this to go further than maybe it should have on the September 13th meeting. It should have been, hey, we're pulling this one out, and we just never got a letter. So I could, if it was, if, like I say, if it was something that was, we put it in and we knew better, then I'd have a different look at it. But I would tend to, um, support this and, and allow it to be pulled out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would say that, after listening to all this, um, I go back to what policy is. And I remember I was on the board when we came up with the policy. And the reason we came up with the policy was because there are proliferation of midterm withdrawals for what we felt were really inappropriate uses. And so we came up with a policy to try to limit that. And I, the one thing that this board has the responsibility for in the policy is, is making sure that we, uh, you know, it's not a, a, carved in stone, uh, law, but it's to make sure that we are trying to accomplish the concept of what we were trying to do. Uh, if this were being, uh, withdrawn, uh, for a subdivision where we were just going to go put, uh, commercial or residential, uh, with a developer on it, I would definitely vote no. Um, but I think that, uh, given the, uh, compelling case that, uh, Mr. Mills has made, uh, and the, his understanding of, of, of how the process worked, um, I'm, I'm, I think I'm happy to support, uh, the withdrawal for, for him and his family on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd just say that, um, you know, this is, this is a really challenging one. Um, you know, I, I support the, the principle that what we're trying to do here, which is to restrict, uh, residential development, uh, in the rural lands. But here we're confronted with a situation where I'm pretty well convinced there's going to be residential development on that property. And I'm, I just have to make a, a, my best judgment about what is less likely to be impactful in terms of that residential development. And, uh, I think from what I can see here, I, my odds are better with the Mills family than they are with that, with the possibility that they sell the property to somebody else. It could be, um, more, uh, challenging. So I, I, I'll probably, um, cross my fingers and, um, support the, uh, request.
Oh, sure. Uh, I just wanted to say, first of all, I appreciate, because I, I wasn't sure, I had, I'd heard there was some, um, maybe some blaming of our staff going on, and I really did not want to see that. Um, while I think there's always processes that can be improved and we learn, um, I think that staff did what they were supposed to do. And so I appreciate very much that, um, this evening there, it, it seemed to be an acknowledgement that perhaps we didn't fully understand what, what we were up against either. So I appreciate that on the point of the applicant. I think Mr. Eisenhower makes a very good point, um, about, you know, we are here to withhold poli-, withhold, make and withhold policy. Um, but it sounds as if this is going to be a, um, place for you and your family to live. I don't know how you're going to lea-, leave First Colony so easily, but that's fine, whatever. Um, but, um, and, and so, um, I, I will support this as well.
Um, as the liaison to the AFD committee, I did listen in on that meeting, and, um, I appreciate the members of the AFD committee taking this, all this information in. We're very hesitant to, um, make these early withdrawals for the very reasons that my colleagues talked about. But in this particular case, um, I think because it is a minimal, it's minimal impact to the land, and, and to your point, Mr. Eisenhower, looking long-term, what the long-term impacts would be, I think that, um, um, and God bless you if you're wanting to live around all, y'all are amazing, I can just say that. Um, but I think since it's going to be very low impact and you're going to have your family there, um, I'm happy to support this tonight as well.
You want a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll move the motion.
All right, thank you. Motion on the floor, roll call please there. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Apple?
Aye.
Motion, please. All right, next number two, AFD dash 22 dash zero zero one seven, 7294, Richmond Road, Hill Pleasant Farm, AFD withdrawal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, the Board of Supervisors postponed consideration of AFD dash 22 dash zero zero one seven at its December 13th, 2022 and February 14th, 2023 meetings. Following the discussion at the December 13th meeting, the applicant did provide additional information pertaining to the AFD withdrawal timeline, which was provided as attachment number two in your packet tonight. Uh, staff does not recommend approval of AFD dash 22 dash zero zero one seven as it does not meet all of the criteria in the board's AFD withdrawal policy. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have for staff, and the applicant is also in attendance.
Questions?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Hey. Question.
Yes, sir.
Question, um, on the process. I believe when we did this earlier, we did both of them together at one time, didn't we, Mr. Kinsman?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Are we going to do that this evening?
That's up to the board, that's your prerogative.
Okay. All right, we want to go ahead and, um, do both at the same time. Does that work with the board?
Sure. So tell me how that works.
Basically.
So how do you do both at the same time? What's that process?
You would open both public hearings at one time. Um, staff would make one presentation, then you'd do separate votes at the end.
But we do separate votes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, okay. That's fine.
Okay. The Board of Supervisors also postponed consideration of SUP dash 22 dash zero zero one five at its December 13th, 2022 and February 14th, 2023 meetings. And following the discussion at December 13th meeting, the applicant provided additional information, and we have also received a letter from the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District, which has been included in your packet as attachments three and four on the SUP materials. Using the information provided by the applicant, staff has revised a number of the SUP conditions. Conditions three, 12, and 13 have been revised so that construction traffic must access the site from the Norwich Lane and Richmond Road intersection as shown on exhibit A, which is included as attachment two in your packet. Condition six has been revised to reference the USDA Farm Service Agency's Conservation Reserve Program for Pollinator Plannings. Condition 11 has been revised to require additional information to be included in the Construction Management and Mitigation Plan. A new condition has been added as number 28, which would require that environmental site assessments be completed every 10 years during the operation of the solar farm. Condition number 29 has been revised with consultation from the county attorney's office so that the owner of this facility will pay annually the greater of the machinery and tool tax, or the amount which be, would be required through a revenue share ordinance. Condition 30 was revised to reference toxicity characteristic leaching procedure testing to ensure that the panels are considered non-regulated waste in accordance with the Resource Recovery Act. And finally, non-substantive revisions have been made, uh, throughout the conditions for consistency and clarification. Should the Board of Supervisors approve AFD dash 22 dash zero zero one seven, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve SUP dash 22 dash zero zero one five, subject to the proposed conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, and again, the applicant is available as well.
Questions for staff?
Uh, just one question, Mr. Eisenhower, if I could, um, about the AFD withdrawal. Um, uh, it's, let me just summarize my understanding of this, and you tell me if I'm right or not, um, that, uh, in the process of designing the site, um, basically the state changed the, um, uh, conditions under which the site, that would be evaluated for stormwater, and that necessitated the expansion of, um, land that was contained within the AFD, um, to be included, um, in, uh, um, the project and therefore to withdraw. And that the applicant has als-, has, um, added a section of property to the AFD to compensate for that loss. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, I will start with, as far as the, the addition that you referenced, I believe the applicant has referenced that as something that they'll be willing to put forward, but at this time, staff doesn't have an application for that interview. But I do believe that some of the applicant can speak to further. When it comes to the DEQ information, that information would impact how stormwater management is calculated for a solar project. That information was included in the staff-proposed SCP conditions. As far as the necessity to increase the acreage and withdraw more acreage from the AFD, that was a matter determined by the applicant. From a staff perspective, if they were able to design the site within the existing limits, that would have been acceptable. What the applicant worked through with their engineer resulted in that additional acreage, the request for additional acreage to be withdrawn.
Questions for staff?
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And our first speaker, Scott Foster.
Mr. Chairman, just make it clear that this is the public hearing for both AFD withdrawal and the SCP.
Yes, both. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board. Good to be back with you. Want to recognize Buzz Becker with Pivot Energy and Nick Robertson with Kimley Horn, who are going to assist me in this presentation this evening. As John noted, there are two matters before you tonight, this AFD withdrawal and the special use permit for this project. Based on feedback you all gave us, in December, we've revised the conditions applicable to the project and matured a number of details about how the project will be constructed and operated. These revisions sit around the following topics: project access, safety procedures for the railroad crossing, site vegetation management and pollinator enhancements, periodic environmental site assessments and panel specifications. John did a really nice job summarizing those changes in the conditions, and I appreciate he, planning staff, and Mr. Kinsman for incorporating all those modifications to the conditions. I'll deal with the AFD renewal first. Am I right-clicking or am I rolling? Mr. McGlynn asked a good question of John about the schedule as it relates to the AFD withdrawal. That really, that really drives the narrative here. So during the renewal period, the project landowner voluntarily withdrew forty-two acres from the AFD in order to prepare for this application to be filed. That was the smallest amount of acreage that we could put, the original project that we had designed on. The intention being that we wanted to withdraw the least amount of acreage from the AFD to minimize the impact on that district. After that withdrawal was complete and that window closed, the withdrawal was complete on July twenty-seventh of twenty-two. Having designed the project really based on those terms that were applied to the Racefield Solar Project, we learned from staff that they would be incorporating a number of the provisions that were in the recently released DEQ Stormwater Management Memo. In order to accommodate those features, we need more area, in particular for the stormwater infrastructure outside of that original footprint. This generated the need for about ten additional acres, and I believe it was in your, in your packet, but the, you know, the, the bounds of the withdrawal really just kind of expands on the lines to the east end of the project. The bottom line is, had we known that we needed that additional acreage at the outset, we would have withdrawn it during the renewal period. So we're really here before you on, on a bit of a technical cleanup matter. The good thing about approving this withdrawal is it allows us to, to provide those enhanced stormwater conditions. And I'll talk about, more about that when we, when I walk through the permit. As Mr. McGlynn had mentioned, the project landowner plans to submit an additional seven acres to the AFD that's not currently in it to help offset that additional ten withdrawn. And as was noted in the staff report, there's seven thousand two hundred and ninety-four acres remain in this AFD. So now on to this special use permit. So on traffic access, after our discussion in December, we realized that it was probably not the best idea to access this site via Peninsula Street, which would require either a right turn or a left turn across traffic on Richmond Road. Instead, we have moved up to Norge Lane, which is a signalized intersection with adequate turn lanes. We felt like that was a lot safer place to get construction traffic in and out of the, in and out of the site. From, from that intersection, you'll pass St. Olaf's Church on your, on your right, and then make a turn onto Peach where you'll proceed to the crossing. And I've got some good images of that as, as we move forward. And then cross the tracks and then proceed into the site. So the picture on the left is the, the entrance while you're on Norge Lane, St. Olaf's Catholic Church is to your right. That's the turn. I'll talk about the turning radii here shortly that Kimley Horn worked on. This is the nice gravel road, Peach Street, that parallels the CSX track headed towards the crossing. This is the crossing itself. I'll walk you through the procedures on how we're going to get across that as well. Crossing images and then the, the lane down Peach Street. So the engineers from Kimley Horn took a look at the turning radii for every turn getting in and out of this project and confirmed that a lowboy trailer, which will be the largest vehicle accessing this site, can make all those turns, which is a good thing. Over the total of the thirteen weeks of construction, they expect about sixty lowboys to go in and out of the, the project to get this thing, get all the materials for the project delivered. So we know you all were concerned with the CSX crossing at Peach Street. So we did a whole lot of brain damage on this issue. And I did a, a deep dive trying to find some sort of guidelines on, for, for construction for, you know, large amounts of traffic when you're going to cross a rail line. And I'm kind of, I'm excited to share with you what, what we have. So one of the, one of the things we started thinking about is, how do we learn when the trains are going to be on the track? So can we build a construction track schedule based on the train schedule? So we got part of the way there. We know with relative specificity what time every day Amtrak will come through. You think about three of those, three of the daily trains or Amtrak trains. As it relates to CSX use of the line, they are relatively secretive with their schedule. And I can assume that that's for public safety reasons, national security reasons, et cetera. So we've developed a schedule based on Amtrak, but the CSX was, we were unable, unable to confirm. So to that end, we've come up with a plan to put two scouts, this is during the construction period, when deliveries will be happening, two scouts on either side of the crossing, about seven miles from, from the crossing itself. The, the west scout position is at the Dyaskin Road crossing of the CSX line. And assuming a fifty-five mile an hour train, a scout at that point could say, you're cleared across, and you're going to have six minutes and twelve seconds to get across that track without the risk of a train coming from the west. So the southeast portion, this scout will be placed at the, the Transit Center in downtown Williamsburg, about the same distance, providing about the same time window for us to get across the track. So this is, this is a mitigation measure we put in place to make sure that, especially during times of high deliveries, that we knew whether or not there was going to be on a, a train on the track within a given window. So approaching the crossing, and this is, I alluded to this, this is where I went looking for a, like a manual of sorts on crossing train tracks and how to do it safely. There's not a whole lot of art out there, and the best recommendation I received was to follow what is in the CDL handbook. CDL handbook applies to commercial, commercial driver's license, provides guidance based on the type of vehicle crossing the track, the contents of that vehicle, and the size of the vehicle. The most restrictive provisions in the CDL handbook apply to school buses. So we thought, okay, where this is going to be a high-frequency crossing for a short period of time, let's opt in to the most rigorous crossing procedures for getting across Peach Street, which are before you, before you hear. You know, it requires you to slow down, shift to low gear, test your brakes. You're, you're required to stop well in, well in advance of, of the, the crossing. Put the transmission in park, roll the windows down, be listening. So these procedures, in addition to the flaggers, give us high confidence that we can cross this for that short construction period with, with significant safety. We feel good about opting into the most stringent CDL requirements and feel like that's a reasonable, a reasonable set of provisions to opt into. All these have been memorialized in Conditions three, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and by reference to an Exhibit A on the Traffic Management Plan. So crossing the track, a lot of this is relatively obvious. Cross the tracks in low gear, don't change gears, keeps, you know, essentially get across it as, as, as quickly as possible with the appropriate flashers on. So another question we received is regarding the, you know, the environmental impact of the project. So there's, there's, and you, you may hear some tonight, questions about panel safety. And I do a whole lot of solar land use permitting, and this is a feature at every public hearing. So we've developed a condition that addresses this by opting in to this TCLP procedure. So there's, can, the, Condition thirty now requires any panel that's going to be placed on site to have passed this T-clip test. The T-clip, T-clip test is where they grind these panels up, run water through them, run acid through them, to ensure that no heavy materials that are in the panel will leach out. So this is the test that is required to ensure, this is a test that's required of anything that's going to go into a landfill as regular trash. It's certified as non-hazardous waste. Nothing will leach out of it when it's ground up, water runs through it, acid is washed through it. So when solar manuf, when solar developers solicit proposals for panels, certification of passage of T-clip is always on that spec sheet. So it's something we can submit along with our final site plan to say, hey, these are the panels we have on order, they've passed the T-clip, it's good protection for the county. For me, if you think about those panels having passed that test, that more or less guarantees that nothing's going to get on site, they can get into the groundwater and get into the soil or get into the air. And that comes to the second point here, this ongoing site evaluation. So it was Mr. Becker's idea to, to opt into a Phase One ESA every ten years. Essentially, we're going to go in, do a test to make sure that nothing's been spilled on site, nothing's leaching, leaching out of the panels. And this test applies to really any sort of material that could potentially be hazardous, petroproducts, heavy metals, et cetera. And by opting into this ESA and, and specific provisions there, in the event something is discovered, the applicant is on the hook for cleaning it up. So I think this goes a long way of saying how confident we are that there won't be anything on site that's going to leach out, and we're going to prove it to you by doing this periodic testing. Revenue, this is the, the fun part. I know this is not a number that's going to, you're going to, you know, lay awake at night thinking about. But up until July one of twenty twenty-two, projects, solar projects of five megawatts and less were exempt from local taxation. They paid enhanced real estate taxes on the underlying use, but they were not subject to any other local taxation. So now that that has changed, they are subject to your local machinery and tools tax, but that rate cannot exceed the local real estate rate. There also is a provision under state code where a county can adopt a revenue share ordinance. That allows the county to say, okay, we're going to assess all solar facilities at fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt, index to increase at ten percent every five years beginning in twenty twenty-six. So if you adopt a revenue share ordinance, you have exempted your solar facilities from machinery and tools tax. So what we've done here is given you the both of, both of best worlds, and I appreciate Adam working with me on this condition. So pursuant to the language of Condition twenty-nine, this project will pay the greater of their machinery and tools tax obligation or revenue share. And you can see in year sixteen, due to the depreciation under, the depreciation schedules under M and T, in year sixteen, those revenue share payments kick in and will end up going up over time. I know this is only three hundred and five thousand dollars, but this is the best and really most up-to-date in solar permitting, in, in solar permitting revenues that, that we can offer. So it's really the best of both worlds. It's become a standard operating procedure for majority of projects in counties that have not already adopted revenue share. And it allows you to capture those higher revenues on, under machinery and tools for the first several years of the project. So pollinators. Butterflies, grasshoppers, bees, birds have been getting a lot of press lately. And it has become a standard operating procedure in solar development to use the project area as a bank of pollinators. So a majority of my clients will plant like a pollinator garden, or they'll plant pollinators in the buffers, thanks to Mr. Becker. Can I get two of these, since I'm doing two public hearings? Thank you. Thanks to Pivot and Mr. Becker, they are opting in to the most detailed pollinator planning schedules and maintenance requirements that I've seen in a permit. So they're going to comply with the DEQ guidelines on pollinator planning and management. They've, they're also opting in to the regulations that would apply to the CRP program, which is the program where the federal government pays farmers not to use certain pieces of their land so long as they keep them in naturally regenerated native plants. So we're opting into those regulations in addition to what the DCR provides. So that's an extra layer of, of, of detail on the pollinators. So why I'm excited about this is, when I started doing solar development, the area under panels was just generally planted in grass, K thirty-one, fescue, whatever they could get to grow as fast as possible. When you replant with pollinators and the agronomy is beyond me, you're actually putting nutrients back in the soil. It is a net benefit to that soil on site. So in theory, this project is decommissioned in thirty-five years, it will be in an enhanced state relative to its current row crop agricultural use, because so many nutrients and organic matter, so much organic matter will have been put back in the soil. In addition, particularly by opting into the CRP program, that program is designed to minimize surface erosion and increase water quality and increase biodiversity by supporting things like birds, bees, bats, et cetera. I'll call on Nick Robertson to walk you through a couple site access and design matters.
Scott, some of the things that we'll speak to are using that access easement to get construction equipment into the site. It is currently approximately fifteen foot wide in most areas. We only really need twelve feet wide to get through. So some improvements that we'll do to protect the adjacent landowners during construction are silt fence at a minimum on the downgrade side, which would be the neighboring side of the property. We can also include silt socks, which would help with any possible erosions, no runoff getting onto their property. And then we'll also be required to have some form of a temporary construction entrance. V-dots typical standard is seventy feet long, twelve feet wide, and six inches deep of number one aggregate. That's usually placed over top of a filter fabric, and then it has to be cleaned or replaced if it gets dirty. We also have the option to use some trackout control mats, which are shown in the pictures provided here. They can be anchored to the ground and anchored together. They come in, generally it's seven foot long sections by twelve foot wide, so someone can pick them up, move them, and install them. And they can be washed off and, and reused and taken. And they can be washed off and, and reused and taken off the site after they're done. We also, um, will probably have to do some clearing to get the equipment back into the site using this access path while it is currently accessed with some larger equipment for farming. Um, we may need to do some branch trimming to provide, um, clearance to bring in some of that equipment for possibly the first hundred foot stretch of the easement. There may be one smaller tree on the CX side of the easement that might have to be removed. But for the majority of it, we already have a wide enough path for our equipment to get in there. So the, Mr. Becker has walked the easement with the abutting landowner multiple times to, to discuss this and to take their concerns into consideration. We feel like we have adequately addressed those, and we will fully meet all of the requirements during site plan approval with the county. These will be things that will be discussed and agreed upon during that process.
So I promised one of you this would only take fifteen minutes, but this will be my last, my last point, I promise, before we take questions. So I mentioned I work in solar development really every day. I see several sets of conditions a week. And you all know I still have a little bit of a local government part of my brain. These, these conditions are really good. Staff's conditions on stormwater are tough. They made the project a little bit bigger, but they really guaranteed good public outcomes for the county. They, those conditions and, and the detail provided in here probably wouldn't be possible on a hundred or a hundred and fifty megawatt project. But we can do it on these smaller projects, and I, and I feel really good about how this, this project will be developed and operate. And the, the second thing about this project, relative to the other ones I work on, with the exception of the Campbells and, uh, and the landowners who's here, uh, no one's really going to see it. It's completely obscured from Richmond Road by the railroad grade. And, uh, that's really unique. And, you know, other applications you're going to get won't be that well positioned from an aesthetics perspective. So I feel really good about this application. Happy to take your questions. I appreciate your all's time and, and especially let me go a little long.
Questions?
Let me just ask one real quick question. Without the AFD withdrawal, can you redesign the stormwater features in a way that would still allow the project to go forward?
So this, I think the simplest way to answer that is the stormwater features would stay the same size. The size of the project itself would have to shrink. And, and only, you know, it's only at four and a half megawatts now. So, uh, that's, that, shrinking of the project may be a deal killer.
The power that you generate will go where?
That's a good question for Buzz Becker.
Welcome Buzz.
Yeah, good to see you supervisor. So yeah, this, the great thing about this project being a distributed generation community solar project and refresh the board's memory, I know it was back in December. But because the majority is that shared solar project, we'd be signing up low income subscribers for Dominion customers in James City County. And so we're just hooking up to that existing three-phase line on Richmond Road to go to the Lightfoot substation, like the solar project just below us would be. And so the vast majority of the output would be at a twenty percent discount to local James City County low income residents.
And it'll be sold, your, your product will be sold off to Dominion?
So the, the power would go into Dominion's grid. What, um, Dominion customers would do is sign up for, they essentially say, hey, this is how much, um, power we use in a given year, and we're going to associate that power in a subscription to our project within the Dominion grid.
But will that be the hundred percent of the project or a certain percentage of the project?
So if, if you see there's a one megawatt phase on the smaller properties, it's kind of a two-phase. So that would be the three point seven five, the bigger so, um, southern phase.
And that, and that'll all go to low income housing?
Hundred percent, uh, not necessarily low income housing, low income, um, residents. But, and, and if you look actually today, you can pull this up on Dominion's portal right now. They have all the projects that have secured shared solar capacity. Not something we can do until we get a use permit. Pivot Energy is the only project on there that has a hundred percent low income, um, commitment. All the other projects are just thirty percent low income. As you can see that, it's, it's not, obviously not a project in this community, it's another one of mine, but it's the only one, and it's really important to us.
Now Dominion met with us during our retreat.
Oh, okay.
And went over solar and all that.
Sure.
And what they were doing and, and how they were handling things. And, and there's certain products they will not even accept. And, and they, they told us right in the, in the thing there because they're not going to purchase those panels or deal with, what I gathered, with somebody with those panels because they're inferior panels compared to the ones that Dominion has researched and checked out, and that's why. How does that fit in with what you're thinking?
So there's a condition to that effect. So as the same condition where we've added the, the T-clip, TCLP test, we've committed to, to buying tier one panels, which is means they're Bloomberg listed. It's essentially, it's, it's kind of like, it's, it's a parallel to UL listing like you would have on a light fixture or anything else, that they've, they've, they've passed those tests. That's as, that's as high standard of panel as, as we can provide. It's the industry-wide standard for saying this thing is safe, operates well, just like any other appliance in the country.
So how about power lines? And right now, we've gotten a load of brand new poles in Norgs that are possibly, or I think, uglier than the old poles we had. They're bigger, they're, they're, we're, and we're in James City County trying to get rid of poles and get rid of that look and bury power. And now all of a sudden, and I didn't realize this when we approved Hill Pleasant, but now we've got a blight in Norgs, in my opinion, with the larger poles going all the way down the road than we had before. At least the other ones were kind of a little bit low, hidden, older, you know, but, you know, that would have changed my mind on some of that knowing what now is being put in Norgs compared to what Norgs was. And there's a lot of people that live in Norgs, and to them, it's a small quaint little village type setting. And now all of a sudden, all these massive poles, and some of them are within three or four feet from each other with four or five guidelines between the two of them. And where, you know, that, that, that concerns me, and is that, is with y'all adding this extra power to the grid, is that going to increase more of the usage of those poles? Or we have to put more poles in? Because we didn't know we got to, any of this was going to go on when we approved the first phase.
Yeah, hindsight's twenty twenty, isn't it?
It is.
And you don't know what you don't know.
That's right.
But now we know.
Oh, excuse me ma'am. And, and to that point, the, the existing power lines that are there have the sufficient voltage, dark fiber communications, what have you, that because that is already established, n- nothing new is needed. So there's an existing, as you know, there's that existing power line that goes over CSX at the Richmond Crossing. That's essentially that same route that the project would connect to the existing power lines.
Now, this is going to Lightfoot, so it's not poles going all the way down through Toana where they're trying to restore the old Toana area. Because that's what we've talked about many a time, is how to get that blight out of there. And all of a sudden, I see poles taking off down the road now there as far as, um, Citizen Farmer Bank. And so that won't affect, y'all are going to Lightfoot with this?
It's a Lightfoot interconnected, yep.
Okay, now at the War Hill connection, basically.
That's the sub there.
Now, with, with the Hill Pleasant, they, we didn't know this either till Friday. And, um, they connected with William and Mary, and William and Mary are buying credits for that facility. And we had not a clue that any of that was even going on. We thought the power was going, but William and Mary is buying evidently, I think, the bulk of the power credits. Not necessarily using the power, but they're buying the credits established with it to, to service William and Mary and Dominion, Dominion Energy. Do y'all have any plans of something like that going on with y'all's facility?
No, and, and how that works, because it's a larger facility, it's twenty megawatt facility, that facility would not be eligible for the shared solar program and, and was developed before the shared solar program was in effect. So because this is smaller, those type of PPAs are, are really not industry practice. And so it, it is what the situation is for the off-take is it would go into the Dominion grid, and then it has to be residential. It's actually a specific code of the off-taker when we do the capacity. So it's low income residential individual customers.
And y'all's is five? Dominion said they were buying one to three plants, not any larger because that fit with what they're doing. So if you're, if you're at five and they say we're buying one to three, then how are you selling it to Dominion at a five when they don't buy five?
So there's, there's a few different programs going on. With the one to three, that's with the Clean Economy Act, their DG, where they carved out some of the overall grid transition to renewables. So the, the three point seven five of the total four point seven five, that's in the shared solar program. And so that's where Dominion, because of that law, has to take the power, and then those credits would go to the low income customers.
See, the, the, the project is twenty-one year, possibly ten more. And your figures were for thirty years instead of twenty-one.
So thirty years is the normal scope that we run, and Buzz can talk about this as well. But thirty years is usually the length that the panels are warranted. So that's usually the, the number that we base any financial modeling on. That's what they anticipate the project lifespan will be, uh, you know, subject to the extension.
Now I hear from other individuals that the panel life is about ten years. And then there's an upgrade and, and it's a beneficial for the company to put in a new panel because it can store more power on days that the sun's shining when not. Because when it's, when, like Monday, when it's no sun, there's no power.
So, um, certainly if there was, um, you know, something were to happen to a panel and it needed to be replaced, that would be something we would do. To change the amount of power that's produced at a location would be in violation of the interconnection agreement with the utility, and it would be a complete reset of this entire process, both with James City County and with the utility.
So if ten years from now, the facility had, say, let's say, two hundred panels, I'm just picking a number, two hundred panels, and then y'all found as a business, because I'm in business, and you found that, hey, look, I can take those twenty now and do what I could with ten and do away with the other twenty and just leave them there and abandon those and do ten and still service. Would that be something, now we've got panels that are sitting out there that could slowly run down or have an issue, and you're only using a hundred of the two hundred, possibly because, you know, economics is economics. I mean, if I could get it a better deal and, and get more out of it and have less panels to maintain, that's what I'm going to do as a businessman. And so what are y'all's plans?
Speaking to a couple of things there, I, I would say for the business plan, these panels are financed with the life of the panel revenue expectations and productions around them. So similar to, um, you know, a construction man with his truck, to a, a doctor with his MRI machine, there's an expectation that I need the lifespan of this based on how I'm financing it. Yes, technology's going to be better in ten years. It would be really expensive then to go and pay for something all over again when you have something that's producing. Within the conditions also from the site, if there's anything that's blighted about our site, if we are not maintaining our site, part of our decommissioning security that is also posted in favor of James City County, you can come and shut us down. So if you see things are in just total disarray, that's a notice of violation of the SUP to us as the long-term owner and operator. And if we don't do anything about it, you come and you pull that bond.
The thing I think about the panel efficiency piece is, so as Buzz said, they finance these things based on an anticipated lifetime. This project is most valuable to, to the owner once those panels are paid off. So, you, yes, there may be massively more efficient panels out there, but they have to be so, they would have to be so efficient that they would make more money than a project that is sitting there paid off, producing power at a reliable rate whenever the sun's out. So a lot of times, these projects are, are most, uh, financially viable at the end of their life when those panels have actually started to curve off on the efficiency. You're exactly right, that, you know, panels do degrade over time, but it's a pretty flat curve. You know, but if you, if you have ten-year-old panels today, you know, it may make sense to retool. But, uh, that's just, it's just not their model.
And with, with them degrading, then, you know, you always worry about the chance of leaching and everything else that goes on, you know, and we know it's not a perfect world. If you've got a hurricane or a tornado in there, it could change everything. And it's, so, um, I like, I like the fact that the pollinators versus the grass, and I know it's, 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 it's really good for us, but it's a better move for y'all because you're not cutting grass. And so that saves, you know, put a bunch of flowers out there. But the only thing about our environment is, I learned years ago from a fourth tree, in fact, it was Billy Apson, and, um, he gave a class on it. It's not, our environment is not designed to grow the flowers and, and all that. It's designed to grow trees. Like out west is more of a flower, it doesn't grow the trees like we grow the trees. So these trees are going to come up on their own. And, you know, that we've, we're going to have to maintain that. So it sounds great, I'm going to have a meadow of all these beautiful flowers out there, and the bees and butterflies will run all around, but the poplars and the pine trees are going to be coming up like crazy out there.
It's almost immediate, yeah. So there will be ongoing maintenance of the pollinators, periodic mowing. It won't be as frequent as you, you would have mowed a, a hayfield or, or a big lawn. But for that very reason, because where you're not farming or you're not cutting grass, you're getting volunteer trees all the time.
And nothing that worries me is in construction, is, as you know, the more equipment that goes over the ground, the more it compacts it, the less valuable the ground is. You know, when we're going to put a house in and it's a septic area, we cordon that off so nobody runs across it because it won't absorb. Well, you're going to have to run across this land all over to, to put the concrete in and put everything in place that you need to put in. Well, that, you know, a lot of people think the ground will just puff back up. It doesn't puff up. Once it gets compacted, that's when we have the runoff issues and the problems.
And, and I'll, I'll let Nick speak to this because he, he understands compaction way better than I do. But there is a condition to that effect, uh, Condition eighteen, where we're required to disc the, the, the site, after the topsoil has been replaced and put where it's supposed to be. And requires a geotech report noting that decomptions happened. And that's, that's for that very reason. But Nick, you want to talk about that?
I think Scott covered it pretty good with that. That condition is in there to protect that. The only places where legitimate compaction is going to take place on purpose is for the roadways and then to, um, build those stormwater basins that are needed to provide the protection, um, during construction. But the disking of the, the array areas will occur before they go and, and do the permanent seeding for the pollinators, and that will provide, um, that decomaction that's needed. And really in the array areas, this, this site is so flat, there's, it's not like they're proposing mass grading or stripping of that topsoil, um, to put the, to the piles in. And there's not, you know, there's only concrete in the inverter locations, so it's not like there's concrete in all the array areas. So there shouldn't be as much concern about that compaction in that array area.
So the poles aren't set in concrete? They're not?
No, they're just piledrivers.
Okay, so they're long enough, just piledrivers. So when that pile driver's out there, that compression's going on at each one of those sites?
So is there any?
Right.
Oil will go down about six or seven feet.
I know our water and soil report, you know, talked about, you know, the compression on the soils and everything else. And it also, you know, talked about, you, you can't rebuild that, and this is some of the better farmland within the community. So it worries because when we, when we did the last one, we didn't want houses there. And then we did the one to twenty, which slowed that down. But now we're looking at, you know, is this the safest use of this land? You know, I have concerns about entrance, the railroad tracks. I've been, uh, the fire department, more than one fatality on those railroad tracks in different locations, and it's a sad event. And, um, there's people that travel it all the time. I mean, they've, they've gone across it, just didn't think it that one time. I know y'all put stuff into place for that. And I noticed on the report, staff does not support it. Because it doesn't meet all four criterias. You've answered the, the thing about VEPCO.
Long decade, Mike.
Oh, yeah, the VEPCO. Dominion Energy now, but you know, we're all that same age there, pretty close.
I don't know if Scott was.
The, um, I noticed we got one, one, um, email that talked about coming down that road, and I've visited that road, know that road and, and all that, and, um, And to get back there, it's, it's not enough room. Means you say you got enough room, but there, there's not enough room. And you've got slump off over the railroad tracks to a certain point and there's, but so far you get to that. The only equipment that was more or less put in there were the tractor trailers when they ran in to get the corn and that sort of thing came back out. I'm worried about that section of road right in there, the old road. And because at the very end, the property line tips over even further towards CSX from the owner. So what you're planning on, you know, as far as maintaining or trimming that, or there's a bunch of old seeders that they're probably gonna lose, but I would be cut them and run over the root system and that sort of thing. That age, they, it usually strips the root when traffic goes over them. And you couldn't put a buffer far enough around them, cause you'd be in the railroad tracks then, in order to protect those trees. And I don't know if the owner knows that, I've mentioned it a little bit to them, but if the owner knows that, that, that those trees may be affected and, and may end up dying and that's part of their property there.
The first part of that, the roadway, whatever improvements need to be made for the construction traffic to access it as far as the subgrade with the temporary construction entrance, that will, that will be done and then removed at the end. And I imagine Mr. Becker has talked to the property owner about how they wish for that to be restored. The, after construction is not planned to utilize this entrance, so we don't need to bring it up to a standard to where it will be used all the time. From a standpoint of the tree trimming and clearing, we're gonna work to minimize that as much as we can. My understanding is that it's got a 15-foot wide cleared path for the majority of the distance and Mr. Becker has talked to his construction crew, they only need 12-foot clearance for their equipment to get back there. So we'd like to minimize that as much as possible and then also work with that adjacent landowner or the abutting landowner, if there are trees of certain concern or whatever, to protect those to the greatest extent that we can.
And, and no, we did, we did get an email about the, I can't remember which owner it was, but would rather have the Richmond Road, of course, the Richmond Road is, is basically, you're not gonna get anything over that hump. I've driven that and trying to get a, you know, any, anything across there, a low boy's gonna be sitting on track, so it's not going across there. So that is your only option is, is that way, but I don't know if all the owners down there realize it from some of the emails we've received as, as far as, you know, that access. They, the one definitely wants it out on Richmond Road and, and, but there, there's no way you can get anything in there, let's use a crane to get in. And I'll let some of the other board members, yes, so go ahead.
Well, you just, you had made mention before that the staff doesn't support it. Um, it's, that's the AFD portion, I guess, that they don't support. And I think the main point for us there is that, is the dispute between whether or not it was a foreseen circumstance. And when we discussed with the planning commission, you know, originally designing the site, we designed it under the standards that Racefield was held to. When DEQ released this guidance memo, which was not in effect, it was just a guidance document, the county staff decided to proceed and uphold those higher standards in the event that it was gonna become the regulations that we had to adhere to. Now, that guidance has been published and has been made, something that future projects will have to adhere to, but this project still would not be subject to that if, if James City County had not elected to go ahead and implement those requirements. So we really had no way to know that that was going to happen. If we did, we would have taken out that additional land at that time. That's where our dis, our disagreement comes in that process.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make, I'd like to confer with Mr. Holt about that, please.
I think we interpreted at the staff level in the Stormwater Division, we interpreted that memo differently. And it is confusing to be sure. So just at a high level, you sort of saw this in some of the timeline presented earlier. The March 29th, 22 memo, 2022 memo that DEQ issued, said that the new regulations regarding the post-development stormwater management at solar projects was effective immediately. So that became effective on March 29th. That, that's our reading of the memo. And under that policy, as of that date, solar panels were to be considered unconnected impervious area when doing the water quantity and quality calculations. The April 14th memo restated that those provisions still applied. However, they recognize that some projects might've been a little bit further along in development. And so what that policy said was, hey, if you're able to get your interconnection agreement prior to December 31st, 2024, that you're not required to do that. But it was also clear that the April 14th memo does not relieve any solar projects from compliance with existing state or local or federal laws or regulations. And it encouraged early compliance with that March 29th memo. So those were the dates that were in there that said, as of March 29th, it's considered interconnected impervious surface. Where it gets confusing is sort of the whole notion of that design criteria and that design reg, that's not applicable to James City County. So the guidance document will only apply to projects where DEQ is the plan reviewer and is the VSMP authority. So that's mostly gonna occur in more rural localities where localities don't have the professional staff on hand to be their own stormwater administrator, they rely on the state. That guidance document was for those localities and that's not applicable to us. So what we did is based on that March 29th and April 14th regulation, cause it said it was gonna become effective immediately. And we here in James City County have always approached stormwater and runoff protection pretty conservatively, we brought those into the SUP. So that that interconnection date wasn't necessarily the guiding factor, but it doesn't have anything to do with the, the design guidance document. That's for the separate piece.
Thank you.
To clarify, Paul's spot on, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not sore that we have to comply with the higher standards. We're happy to do that. It's just the timeline didn't work out where we could, we could incorporate that, that design into our AFD withdrawal scope. So it, there's, we're happy to comply with what the county's put in the conditions, just the timelines didn't match up. So there's, we're not, we're not at all disputing that.
And if I could speak to that a little bit more specifically, that it's because those proposed conditions were, were just given to us on August 29th. So, so after the window where we finalize our AFD withdrawal, which is totally fine, continued to work and meet with staff multiple times afterwards to adjust that, but we were not aware that we would be subjected to those DEQ new policies that the implementation guidance says would not, and obviously in other jurisdictions. That, that was not made apparent to the applicant until well after the, the AFD withdrawal was finalized.
That was in April?
And, and if I can go, is this, this isn't my presentation? Yeah, let me pull up the timeline, sir, and we can kind of walk through it. See if I'm, yeah. Fifty-fifty chance I was gonna scroll right. So yeah, to, to, to Paul's point, so we got these two DEQ memos here. So the first one being the initial guidance that the proposed staff conditions are based on is largely based on this memo. Two weeks later, we have that implementation memo and actually on a, on a backup slide, I can show the exact section from that implementation if that would be helpful. And I can go there in a second that says, hey, recognizing a lot of investment in these projects, if you get your interconnection before the end of 2024 and you are in a DEQ jurisdiction locality, then you would not be subjected to that. And so as we're going through, you know, development table, application design, site design, AFD withdrawal, we, we did not have that condition available to us. It was, we had the conversation in the development roundtable and it was brought up, it was a, you know, a hot topic within less than a month when it was first published. And there was kind of the dialogue of, hey, we have some new DEQ guidance and our feedback was, yeah, but this implementation memo shows that we would not be subjected to it. And so our understanding is it would still be the Racefield conditions that were just approved. It was a little bit of a dialogue at that point. So we, we had not been given a set of, hey, this, this is the standard that we expect. I mean, and certainly if, if we had that idea in the enrollment window that summer, we could've pulled the whole thing out if we were being super conservative. But it was the intention was, hey, we want to do this design with the least amount of impact on that AFD as possible. And so we designed it that way, knowing that, hey, it might've been honestly in our best interest to pull the whole thing and then after the fact, go and submit anything that was needed. And so we were trying to target, hey, what is, do we understand the prevailing stormwater constraints and design standards and let's design to those standards that were, you know, there was an immediate precedent, not a month before. And so that was the whole thought process of, hey, James City County has a recent precedent, we're going toward that precedent as we understand our standing in the regulatory environment. And by the time we got, hey, this is what we, you know, want to hold you to, great, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be, you know, productive, but we didn't get that until after, you know, a month after the window was closed. And so that's where it's just kind of a, an unfortunate timing there.
Let's go ahead and take a short recess. Call us back. All right. Any other questions?
Not yet, not right now.
Okay, our first public speaker. Jay Everson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Everson, 6923 Chancery Lane. You know, last year, y'all appointed me, I was honored to be appointed to this Natural and Cultural Assets Committee. And a few months ago, you got this report. And one of the things in this report, on page 26, for example, it talks about different risk. And one of the risks, of course, is utility scale solar developments. And in particular, the risk assessment, as it reads on page 26, is a tool, excuse me. For example, the risk of large utility scale solar installations that could remove hundreds of acres of forest or highly valued agricultural soils could change if the county were to adopt policies for where large solar projects are or not appropriate. Mr. Hippel referenced the letter you received from the Colonial Soil and Water District, which talks about the fact that this land that there are 19.8 acres of it is USDA prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. Now, James City County has used soil studies in the past, particularly shrink, shrink, swell. And we check it and then if it's got it, you have to build supercharged footings. So in part here, these applicants tonight kind of made the point I wanted to make. And the point is, we need a policy. These guys came forward with a project, then they saw Racefield and they adopted. Then the state came in and the state didn't come in and, you know, all this mess. My point is, we shouldn't be doing any of this until we have a solid policy in place. Because when you have soils sitting there in this particular area, which are considered by the state to be prime, and it goes on to talk about the damage that can incur for these heavy machinery, as Mr. Hippel pointed out. Says in the report on page 28, soils also store a lot of carbon. also store a lot of carbon and therefore high quality farm soil should not be removed to grade land for solar sites. In recognition of these potential impacts on natural resources, the county's comprehensive plan calls, excuse me, calls for county, for the county to add provisions, in ordinances or development approval conditions to minimize clearing of forest lands for alternate energy production. Now, there is some forest lands on there in that location. The point here is high quality soils, we don't have a policy. And it seems to me we're doing this by the seat of our pants, something that's going to be here for 30 years, a generation. There's going to be nobody here alive when this thing is finally taken down. And, you know, you only got one shot at this and we need to have standards in place. And it goes on to talk here on page 29. Other impact concerns for utility scale solar development include the panels themselves and the lack of regulation of surface runoff. While the ground beneath the panels is pervious and often vegetated with low growing grasses or shrubs, concentrated sheet flow, just like a roof, which is why you have gutters on these things, so it doesn't go down and wreck your foundation. These don't have gutters. Fall can cause, fall from the panels can cause significant water quality and erosion concerns, especially when compared to the, to the existing topsoil or in the case of the forest park, the previous forest cover. Now, when this report was presented, a couple of you, Mr. Eisenhower, Mr. McClen, in their own ways, asked, how are we going to know if this will be in 30 years, yellowed out, dusted, or whether, whether it's going to be worn because people actually used it? And it seems to me, before we continue on with any of this stuff that lasts forever, I mean, you talk about resident development lasting forever, this stuff's forever. And if, if, if what happens, like the Colonial Water and Conservation Board talks about here with the way that the, it's going to be packed down, it could be never. Once that topsoil is gone, the high quality, it's gone. And it seems to me that we need to take a good, hard look and come up with an ordinance that we don't hear this stuff, but we change the rules here and change the rules there. Thank you.
You.
I'd just like to take exception to the fact that I hope I'm here in 30 years. Thank you. Other than that, thank you for what you said.
Charles Skelly, is that, am I pronouncing that right? Okay, thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. What's up? My apologies. Mr. Chair, supervisors, thank you all for taking the time to hear me this evening. My name's Charles Skelly. I live in Richmond, Virginia, but I represent members that live and work in James City County. I myself have wired some projects in James City County in the previous portion of my career. I represent 1,450 members approximately of electricians of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Projects like this, proposed project require, for tax credit purposes, prevailing wage, so good wage and benefits for the, the construction workers on the project. They also require apprenticeships for the full tax credits. Those apprenticeships, I'm sure you all have heard, everyone's concerned these days about making sure we have enough skilled trades workers for the future. For a generation, trades workers were, were considered less than and not good careers and folks didn't go into the trade. So now suddenly everyone's very worried about this. My local trains electricians, we have approximately 300 apprentices under training right now. And construction works a difficult life in the elements, hard hats, porta potties. Eventually, often people tire of it and look for a maintenance job. I've got members that work in several of the facilities in James City County and all over the jurisdiction in central Virginia that graduated from our program, worked in construction for sometimes a short time, sometimes a long time, and eventually landed a maintenance facility. So a project like this, I believe, is a great opportunity to help with workforce development and, you know, anytime apprentices are given more opportunities for jobs and training, that means we've got more people going into the trades. I think that was about all I had to say. I just wanted to come and speak about the work opportunities. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Jacob Caricella, is that proper? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board. My name is Jacob Caricella, native of the peninsula. Please don't fault me, but from York County, but now I live, work and sleep in Williamsburg. I'm with, with Energy Right. It's a nonprofit organization helping localities and their citizens navigate clean energy landscape. Given all the new developments and, and all the, all the projects being proposed across Virginia, our main goals are to see clean energy developed to high standards across Virginia and to make solar projects the best neighbors possible. The team encourages energy development the right way on the local level with a focus on property rights and conservative values and ideals, including in all of the above energy strategy. We want to ensure there is a common sense voice in each community when energy discussions take place. We've had an opportunity to engage with some county staff and community leaders here in James City County about solar development and appreciate the diligent work you all have already done and accomplished on the board. As a reminder, there are many reasons to support small solar projects such as the one before you tonight. And all the above energy strategy will balance the grid, generate more American energy and in the case of this project being shared solar, offer energy consumers who subscribe an opportunity to see cheaper electric bills. Additionally, solar projects are a unique way of preserving land for future use while generating up to 10 times more revenue for the county than if the land sits unused, a benefit to all residents. Adjacent property owners don't have to worry about noise, traffic, or even more egregious, egregious environmental impacts from permanent project proposals. We also want to reiterate the importance of property rights of private landowners and institutional principle we learned very quickly growing up here in the historic triangle. And we should always be promoting economic opportunities for our neighbors as long as proposals don't infringe on adjacent neighbors' personal liberties. Also, just speaking generally, happy to send you this data, but looking at the data from 2021, Virginia agricultural crop production actually increased even though we did see some lost agricultural land. Happy, I'm happy to send you guys that, that research if, if you're interested in looking at it later on. As a lifelong resident of the area, thank you all for your hard work and an opportunity to address you this evening. As these energy discussions occur, we strongly urge you to consider landowners' property rights, American energy generation, additional revenue opportunities for the county, affordable electricity for low income residents, and an innovative way to preserve property here in James City. My colleagues and I are happy to serve as a resource and, and it's really easy to find me. I live about five minutes, I guess, north of here, so, south, or, yeah, so, thank you very much. You guys have a wonderful evening.
You too. Any other speaker cards? All right, I'll go ahead and close both public hearings and look for the board for conversation, direction, ever. We'll start, y'all.
Since, since we're voting separately, do we want to talk about one and then vote on it?
That's what I would do. Talk about one, vote on it, then talk about the other and vote on it. Is that good with the board?
Otherwise, it's going to get confusing.
Yeah. So let's go ahead and talk about the AFD-2022-00177294 Richmond Road Hill Pleasant AFD Withdrawal.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to, to say. First of all, I agree with Mr. Caricella primarily about the future of solar projects. We've approved three of them here in the county. I voted for all three. And again, hindsight's 2020 and you don't know what you don't know, but we've learned a lot over the past few years about solar projects. And I think in reference to what Mr. Everson was speaking about, we, I believe it was last year, we spent $55,000 of taxpayer money to do a study on our natural resources here in James City County. And we all voted to approve it. I think that they did under Mr. Holt, Ms. Rosario's leadership. They did a wonderful job looking at ways that we can protect our natural resources. In it, they're recommending that we have a policy pertaining to solar projects and they address the, they address as well the loss of prime farmland due to the loss of prime topsoil. And to date, we still do not have a policy in place. Our own comprehensive plan that we all voted for recommends that we have a policy on solar projects and we do not have one. The information that was provided from the Soil and Water Conservation District, Natural Resource Study provides for me, has provided information to help make a more thorough and balanced decision. Now, in the Soil and Water Report of note for me, and I think Mr. Everson referenced it, and in paragraph three, it says, per the USDA's Web Soil Survey, the specific area proposed for the construction of the solar panel project at the Richmond Road address contains approximately 19-point acres of soils identified by USDA as prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. So these soils have been identified as being extremely productive for agricultural purposes. Once manipulated, regaining the productive qualities of these soils will be long laborious task, one of which will likely impact the owners of these properties long into the future. And in summary, he says, by listing, and by listing all the previously mentioned factors that I just talked about, recommends rejecting this project and consider that we select sites in the future for solar projects that will not have the potential to negatively impact prime farmland or natural soil function and that it can tie into existing stormwater infrastructure. So I'm concerned about the topsoil. I know you talked about disking it up and putting it back and then you're planting the, the pollinators and, you know, we get storms. What happens if we get a storm? What happens to all that topsoil? Where's it going to go? Is it going to go into the watershed? Are we looking at sediment that's going to cause an issue with our water quality? That's something that I, I have concern about. I'm not necessarily opposed to solar projects, but I think that we need to have a policy in place rather than willy nilly picking them here, there, wherever. I would feel more comfortable myself having a guideline in place as it addresses these, especially in terms of the AFD removal from, removing it from the AFD because we are looking at these farmland topsoils and this prime agricultural area. I mean, the way things are going with farms around this country, at some point in the future, we might need a farm around here. So that's just some of the things that I've been concerned about in terms of removing it from the AFD is our natural resources and which is why we have the AFD to begin with, is to conserve and to protect those natural resources. So that's just some of my thoughts on the AFD process.
If, if we're talking about the AFD withdrawal first, I wrestled with the preparation for this meeting because we had two of these AFD withdrawals. And I came into this meeting not really leaning toward approving the first one because it was residential and, you know, the other, other factors, we had a policy and everything. After listening to it, yeah, I, I think we made a, a proper, proper decision on that. One of the things that I, I'm concerned about is that with this one, we have essentially the same kind of, of exception. Except here is a, a particular case where, you know, you, you had a clear conflict of, in my mind, conflict of guidance and everything, and that the applicant did everything in their power to try to make it work properly and that they came back and said, you know, this is the best way we could, we could try to do it. So I, I really don't have any problem with making the AFD withdrawal for this process, especially since the landowner is perfectly willing to reconstitute part of his property to offset the, the withdrawal from the AFD. So I think that that's, you know, one of those, had, had, had Mr. Mills known, he would probably put in his application. Had these people known, they probably would have withdrawn the whole, the, more land. You know, if you want to, if you want to shoot people in the foot over things like this, then the next person that comes in and says, I got 100 acres, I only need 15 of it, but I'm going to withdraw it all because you may or may not let me do what I want to do. So I, I, I think that the, the withdrawal here is, is pretty, pretty straightforward. I could, I could support the withdrawal. I, I will tell you that I sit here and think back to when we did something called the EO Zone. We made a decision to put something that should have been inside the PSA outside the PSA. And this is land that's designated for EO in the comp plan. It's not designated for rural, it's not designated for farm. We have an applicant who's come forward to us and said, the property owner would, would like to do this. It's an economic benefit to the property owner that exceeds what they could do otherwise. And in, in my mind, it's, it's essentially a property rights issue. Are we going to tell the property owner that, oh, you've got prime agricultural soil, therefore we're not going to let you do anything with your property but farm it? If the property owner wants to do a solar or wants to, to family subdivide or put some residential on it and it meets our ordinance requirements, then so be it. You know, this is, like I say, it's, it's prime farmland that even our comp plan says isn't going to be farmed. So I, I really don't, I really don't buy that argument. I, I think that when I look at this overall, there are some concerns that have been raised. And I, I look at what the, what concerns are and what the benefits are. And, you know, if you're looking for a reason to say no, you could probably find reasons to say no. When I look at it, I'm looking at it from the aspect of, of our, our citizens. And this is a benefit to the James City County taxpayers, especially our low income taxpayers. This is a benefit that I think that will still preserve that land for future potential use, whether it's EO or, or whatever later on. But I think that the, if the arguments are, are clearly in my mind outweigh in, in the direction of approval.
I'm going to support this motion for a withdrawal. It, it does strike me that in this particular instance, we are dealing with a situation where essentially the rules were changed in the middle of the game. Whether it was changed with understanding that it did apply to this project or not, it does seem to me that what's happening here is the applicant is trying to put together a quality project and do it in a responsible way that meets the concerns that staff has expressed about the need to have the highest standards, which is great. You know, as we're looking at this project as a whole, I, I think, I understand that policy would be great to implement. I, I think we are going to be a while developing that policy because this is a very rapidly changing field. But I'm, I'm very confident that what we have in this proposal are a set of conditions that are way above all of the conditions that have applied to the three sites that have already been approved. And I commend the staff and the applicant for working together to try to create an opportunity here for a model of how to address the concerns that people are rightly raising. This, this is a new field. It, it, and it is also a, an agricultural field, but as Mr. Eisenhower points out, we are not planning on it to stay in agriculture. Unfortunately, it was placed in an economic opportunity zone and, you know, we recognize that essentially these solar projects are allowing us to defer a final determination that the land will be converted from agricultural to some form of more intensive development at some point in the future. So I'd rather have the opportunity to see if maybe we can, after some period of time, come to a realization that perhaps it's better to preserve this land in some form of agricultural utilization rather than to see it converted to, to other use. utilization rather than to see it converted to other use. You know, we've had other lands with very high-quality soils that have come with development proposals, and I haven't heard the same level of intense concern about the protection of those soils and that agricultural land. And I think that we shouldn't be holding a different standard in this particular case. It's a new technology, no question about it, but it's one that has improved dramatically over time and will continue to improve until we can get to the point where, as I hope we will, we see more utilization of solar panels on rooftops and parking lots. For now, I think that this represents a real opportunity for the county to set a standard and for our ratepayers, who are lower-income ratepayers, to benefit from the production of solar energy. So, I'm gonna support this AFD withdrawal.
It's designated EO, and that can change at any time. It can be re-designated, and so that would, that doesn't concern me as much as, and yes, the soils and all are more important now than they were when Hill Pleasant was put in, because we didn't have the report. We didn't have what is valuable, what's not, in James City County. So at that time, we did the best we could, like we always do today. We're gonna do the best we can, and may find out in three or four years or something, we should have done something different, but we have to go with what's in front of us at that time. And, you know, I think about all the conversations back and forth with the ground and the soil and the conditions, and it brings me back to old Supervisor Taylor, when he was constantly talking about, you know, "If you take the soil away, you're not gonna get it back. You can't grow anything in concrete. You need to have the topsoil, and you need to make sure they're replaced." And I remember more than one time, listening to Mr. Taylor with just good common sense, because of being a farmer, that he understood the soil, and he understood the value of it in James City County. So, you know, it resonates with me. I was coming in this meeting with a vote in favor of this when I started, and, but the information tonight, and the information from the board members, and listening to everyone, and reading all the stuff we've got, I think I'm in the prime soils and, you know, we're always talking about, "We're gonna do this natural resource, or we're gonna check on this, and then when it goes time to use it, well, I'm not gonna use that today. I'll use this part, and I'm not gonna use that. I'll put this," or, you know, and, you know, we're starting to get some of these reports and put them in place, we ought to be using them. We shouldn't just be sticking them on the shelf. And we pay good money for the report, it says what the value of the land is, and, you know, I'm not against solar, voted on all three of them that have come through, and so solar is not the issue, it's more of the issue of, is this the right spot for solar? Is this the right spot for that? And we've got safety issues. Now, they've done a great job of going, you know, "We need to take care of those, this is what we put in plan, we think this'll work." Wonderful job. Will it work? Is it gonna be a problem? We don't know till something happens. Hope to God it never does. Is it the right spot with the soils? I don't think so. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of what-ifs that I can't put my finger on tonight as far as making a vote in a certain way, but I will tell you that we definitely have to have a plan of what we're gonna do from tonight on, on solar. What are we gonna do? Solar's just gonna be more and more. I hear there's one up on the other side of Anson's Corner that's looking at a piece of land right next to the road. The last thing I want is a solar project right on a main highway. Now, they've done a good job, but you can see a little bit of this. It doesn't all disappear. I know the area very well, but majority of it disappears. So as far as hiding it, y'all done with the railroad track, thank God. It's a good job, but I'll look for the board for a motion on, the first one, which is the AFD 2200177294, Richmond Road, Hill Pleasant Farm, AFD Withdrawal is what we'll be voting on first.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Ms. Sadler?
No.
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
No.
Mr. Hippel?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right, next we have a, is there any discussion on S U P dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-one-five-seven-two-nine-four and seven-two-nine-six Richmond Road?
So that's this project itself?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the project itself, Pivot Energy Solar Project.
I would just like to say, I still have serious concerns about the safety crossing railroad tracks. I think in light of recent news and train derailments and the fact that it was brought up tonight, CSX is secretive about, for security reasons, which is legitimate, you know, that's, I can understand that. I still have concerns about it. I mean, it was after the last time y'all were here, within that week, someone was killed in Lightfoot on the railroad tracks, and then there was another one a week later, maybe heading towards Richmond, maybe. Now, granted, they, I don't think they involved large trucks, but the fact that we're dealing with large trucks, and we've got CSX barreling through James City County, that gives me pause for the location of this project. That's, that is my largest, one of my largest concerns about the location of this project.
First of all, I just wanna say thank you, because I know you all put a lot of time and effort, and I don't take that lightly. I certainly, I know there's a lot of time and resources put into what you've done, and I do appreciate that, but I have great concern over, I know that you went to the extra effort about the railroad crossing and that type of thing, going out there. I am very concerned about that road that goes back to the property, and, you know, I don't wanna be pinned with not caring about low-income, because I certainly care about the people in our county that struggle with paying a utility bill. If I thought for one moment that this would solve that, then I would certainly be supportive. I just have real safety concerns that I just haven't worked through yet about this project. And so, you know, that is why I am not gonna be able to support it. I just don't, the access just does not, I just don't think it's there. Again, I do appreciate all that you have done to try to get there, I just don't think it's there yet, so.
I have a motion on, let's see, let me read that again, S U P dash twenty-two zero-zero-one-five-seventy-four-ninety-four and seventy-two ninety-four and seventy-two ninety-six, Richmond Road, Pivot Energy Solar Project.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Ms. Stevens, you call the roll, please, sir.
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
No.
Ms. Larson?
No.
Mr. Hippel?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, next we'll move into board.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something real quick before we move, since we're on this topic, and to your point, since this is a new field and we're seeing more and more of these applications come forward, we've learned a lot here tonight, and quite frankly, over the last few days, regarding concerns that have been raised over the environmental impacts of solar projects. Our existing comprehensive plan and the Natural Resources Committee study that we all voted to approve, both recommend that we develop a policy by which we can make decisions on solar projects and can be used as a guideline to consider aspects. This Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District report stated concerns regarding today's applications, in that the loss of prime topsoil and prime farmland of, and statewide of importance for USDA would result, would be a result of not taking into account the property and its soil. Given these concerns, I think it would be wise to ask Mr. Kinsman to bring us something in which we can pause solar projects for a year, like we did with the development a while back, so that we could get a handle on this. This would be used to let the public know what we're doing, and I'd also like to please direct staff to begin the process of producing a policy on solar projects, hopefully addressing safeguards to protect our natural resources long-term, and please maybe consider soil and water quality, protection of prime topsoil, impervious, impervious runoff, mitigation of any potential pollutants from panels, and cyber security, which is something we talked about last weekend. So, thank you for that, those few extra moments, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, next on our board considerations is S U P dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-seven, Branscombe Resource Recovery and Aggregate Storage. Terry, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At its December thirteenth twenty-two meeting, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the board postponed this application pursuant to the applicant's request. The public hearing was closed at the initial meeting on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two. In a staff's understanding that there has been no changes or updates since the November meeting, therefore, staff continues to recommend denial of this application. Should the Board of Supervisors approve this application, staff has included proposed conditions to mitigate a portion of the potential impacts. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available.
What are some of those things, mitigations, that you talked about on impact? Sorry, didn't mean to put you.
There was transitional screening, there were buffered areas that were gonna be flagged in the original resolution.
Okay.
There were certain areas for material and equipment storage, conditions for stockpiles, sale of products, hours of operation, a lighting plan should they need lighting, operational mitigation plan, on-site water quality treatment, and they would need to get site plan approval.
Y'all good with all that?
So, if I can, if I can just ask a question of, I guess of the applicant, well, let me ask you first, Ms. Castile, a question about if, even if this were turned down tonight, the operation of the borrow pit would still continue, or it would still be permitted to continue through twenty-twenty?
Eight.
I'm sorry?
Through twenty-twenty-eight.
Twenty-twenty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And as I understand it, the expectation is that the borrow pit is probably at about the end of its, of its life, maybe, this is for the applicant, if I could just ask Mr. Lipscomb about the question of, the applicants indicated in the past that they do not expect this to continue in the kind of intensive operation that we've seen into that full permit date, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And so, would I be able to have you tell us that there will not be another request for that borrow pit, S U P to be extended in the future?
Wouldn't be any more mining there under state-mandated closure, reclamation and closure provisions, which after the mine's exhausted in a year or two, might take another five, six years.
Understand, would that still require an S U P for the?
I think it would.
Well, it sounds to me like we'd probably need a different kind of S U P that would be purely limited to...
Under mining regulations, reclamation is part of the mining. It's how you all interpret it, I think.
So it would, so I guess what I would want to know is, can we get an assurance that this will not be used for an active borrow pit operation beyond the current permit?
I would say that's, we could probably assure that for our property, where about dug out. Now, remember, there's an adjoining property that we do have a mine permit that's owned by Waste Management, and we do the mine.
That's not involved in these cases.
But that's not involved in this issue, but it is tied to the mine permit.
And we know that the operation that is here tonight was something that was being undertaken, though it was not permitted, and it was also in violation of the hours of operation for the, for the property. So, I've asked that we put a time limit on this permit in the same way that we did under the, under the borrow pit, and have the hours of limited operation as well, and I assume that that's acceptable to you all?
Yes, sir.
And would you estimate for us what the anticipated truck traffic would be once the active borrow pit operation has ceased?
Once the borrow pit's gone, because right now, we're getting a lot of dirt in, so we're actually reclaiming a little bit faster right now than we anticipated, because there's a large dirt job going on near Water Country. Other than that, once, well, once that job's complete, we will reclaim as we get our, get dirt into the property, so that's why it's gonna take a number of years.
Yeah, but the traffic will go down. There's no material going out of the site anymore, so.
Because the majority of the truck traffic right now is dirt dumps that are coming in for reclamation, so we're service for the local contractors.
Yeah, I mean, I still have concerns about the, about the amount of truck traffic on a substandard road, but those conditions would, would, a little bit more reassuring to me.
We're kind of in a catch-22, because we're the western end of the industrial park, based on our zoning, and the only access to the western end of the industrial complex is Blow Flats Road.
Right, and I do, and I do thank you for making the effort with Walmart to see if there was some opportunity.
They shot us down flat. And then, I would like to recommend that when they do come in with a plan for their warehouse, maybe we could encourage them, consider an easement, and we would, if they approve it, we will divert everything to Greenmount to go out at the traffic light where it's safer.
Are we expecting that anytime soon?
They weren't limit, willing to limit their flexibility at all, but maybe when they know when the, where the building will go, they would be a little more flexible.
Now, Blow Flats Road, I know that we had concerns last time, Blow Flats Road had people come in, and Blow Flats Road is, what, thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour? Is that proper, what that speed limit is on that road?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay, it's less than I thought, and is twenty-two foot wide, and that's, that's a double road, so I was just comparing it to some of the other roads, just to see how that equaled out. I sixty-four at seventy to fifty-five miles an hour is twelve foot wide for a single, twenty-four foot wide for a double, so it's only two feet difference in the roads. Secondary roads, fifty-five to twenty-five miles an hour, is twelve foot wide, goes down to eleven foot six wide for a single, so a double road like yours would be twenty-three foot, which would be a secondary road, which yours is twenty-two. An unmarked, which yours is, an unmarked secondary road, will go down for both lanes to thirteen feet, so, and those are all VDOT standards of roads that are existing now. So, you know, for yours being in Blow Flats Road, being an unmarked, unmarked secondary goes down to thirteen foot for both lanes, you're twenty-two foot, so, yeah, with the dump trucks and all, it's, it's, you know, you've gotta be a little more careful, but you can go down an unmarked secondary road at thirteen foot wide in both directions, and then you go up to the secondary roads, which are marked, to a single, single lane is eleven-six, a double lane like yours is twenty-three. A double lane like yours is twenty-three feet. So you're not far away from your road, you know, when people talk about, you know, how wide your road is and and our report says is twenty-two foot wide and and so I just checked on it to see how it compared to other VDOT roads out there. And um, of course, always the the larger trucks are more concerned, but they go down the unmarked secondary roads through the community as well. So it was just a comment on roads and and what is going on on other roads out there as well.
Well, I believe that the issues also relate to the turning radius at the at the entrance to the road off of Route sixty and the fact that the shoulders on that road are severely eroded.
Yeah, and that's our unmarked secondary roads have those same issues. And because they're not brought up to any further standards, but they're accepted into VDOT system as both lanes can be thirteen foot wide, so who wants to go down thirteen foot? Jolly Pine used to be that, but you know, just for just to give some information on, you know, yeah, your road is a little narrow, but it's not the worst scenario out there in roads. And we also, of course.
I suspect not quite as many have as have as many uh, of those uh, large trucks traveling in both directions uh, at such a uh, with such frequency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we throw a bike on there and makes it even worse. I mean, bless the bikers and please be careful, but you know, if we can get it through the Walmart, it's better. But just for just for informational purposes, I just wanted to check on that and see.
Is there a way to elevate this to the six-year plan?
Blow Flats Road?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where's Paul? Paul's like, no, it's not going to happen. We have this much money in the plans. It'll probably be the forty plan. Paul's like, yeah, it's a shame. I mean, we wish I wish in transportation, we had, we're doing great as far as doing larger projects and all that, but it's still, it's no money. As it's like everything, we listen to the schools, it's just no money. You know, teachers and everything else trying to get a little bit more and it's just the money's just tough to come by. All right, any other questions?
Well, I'm just checking to see whether are we, I know that Supervisor McGlynnon had put through, are are we good with that?
Well, are you all good with it? I mean, I.
I mean, no, has it been accepted? Okay, okay, I'm just trying to check that.
Has accepted that that condition, I believe.
Okay.
To vote both of them together on the five-year plan at twenty twenty-eight. Is that what you're looking to do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Adam, do you need more for our reporting and make sure we're covered on?
The the condition as we wrote it and I I shared with um, applicant council is this S U P shall be valid until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Between January first and January thirtieth of each year, zoning staff shall be allowed to enter upon the property to ensure compliance with all S U P conditions.
Thank you. That's your motion, sir.
That's my motion.
All right, that's his motion, motion on the floor, roll call. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Dreisner?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I can have just a quick minute.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's not often that the board has starts off with a motion to approve and that motion is not approved. For the sake of clarity, if I can have a motion to deny both the AFD withdrawal and the uh, solar S U P, just for our record, I think that'd be helpful.
Motion to deny.
On both?
Motion to deny.
Is that just for clarity, is that for both of them?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, roll call. Ms. Dreisner?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynnon?
No.
Ms. Sadler?
Motion to deny, aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, board requests and directives.
I had uh, received a phone call from Mr. Scott Turner, who is uh, over at uh, Eastern State and he invited me out to um, tour the facility and I met with the CEO, uh, Daniel Herr. Um, had a very interesting hour. Uh, I think he's going to reach out to all the board members. I would I would strongly suggest that you uh, avail yourselves of the opportunity to go take a look at the facility and talk to them about uh, their facility and and its impact on on our community. Um, and one of the things that I did bring up to them and uh, it obviously is beyond their capability, but I wanted to make them aware of is that um, there are buildings that will remain on the retained Eastern State site that are derelict. If you go, if you if you go down.
By the like where the pool?
Yep.
Yep.
And the the big building right in on just off the road, it's about four stories high. They they've cut down all the trees that were grown out of the thing, but they've, the windows are beat out. Uh, it's 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 in terrible, terrible condition. We don't know what the um, status of of the um, building itself. Um, Eastern State has no money to do the demolition. Um, and since we are in the process of going through this uh, Eastern State sale, I think it's an opportunity for us to try to put a little bit of leverage on the state to see if they can assure us that those that particular building will be remediated. Now, a lot of the other buildings that are on the parcels that will be sold, obviously will be have to be torn down and remediated in order to develop the property. But right now, there are buildings on the parcel that are going to be retained, that there are no plans to tear down and remediate. And so I I wanted to bring that to your attention and uh, uh, put that in our thinking cap for the future.
I have nothing tonight.
I would just like to offer my condolences publicly to Ms. Larson of the recent loss of her dad. She's been a great daughter, taking good care of him. And I just um, what should I have been thinking and praying for you?
Um, thank you. This, just to be clear, because I don't even know if this is legal, but this was from four years ago, but um.
Legal now.
Yeah, that's right. So when I went to clean out my dad's stuff, I found this jacket. And this was in there still, my campaign sticker from four years ago. Um, my parents never missed an opportunity to help me knock on doors or work the polls, even though they're they're both not, well, I mean, um, Mr. Everson's got them, you know, one of them already took the advice. The other one's hanging in there, though, so I, you know, but um, but tha- that just meant a lot to me that my dad hung on to that. My dad was never one to hide his political affiliation. If you walked into his house, um, on the columns, his decorating style was the George Bush and Laura Bush pictures and letters from their library. Um, but that said, when one of his grandchildren cast their very first vote ever in a primary for Bernie Sanders, um, he probably internally had a heart attack, but externally, he just expressed his um, gratitude to that grandchild for taking the time to register to vote and to vote. And so while he may have had disagreements politically with people, um, I heard him say several times um, when we would be talking and and Mr. McGlynnon's name would come up and he would say how knowledgeable Mr. McGlynnon was about this county. Even though Mr. McGlynnon was of a different political affiliation than him, I just think we can all learn a lot from that because, you know, we all have our disagreements, we may not agree on everything, but we may find something to agree on. So um.
I think we can all agree on that.
Yeah, there you go. So.
Know what he means by John.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I got it, I got it, took me a second, but but um, so but I but I want to say a thank you um, publicly to my colleagues um, for the support. They they've given me support over the past few years with my dad's health, with some challenges that we faced. You all have always asked me how what was going on and how it was going and I appreciate that very much. And then the support that you've shown um, after my dad's passing to the James City County staff, several of whom reached out to me personally, came to my dad's service. Meant a lot. Same for the administration. I'll always be grateful. Friends from the county, the city, the schools that I heard from, thank you very much. I'm sorry to be up here, um, you know, I won't do this every meeting, but it was important to me to acknowledge my dad was a longtime James City County resident, um, taxpayer. He loved this county, um, and he supported his daughter and even though he thought she was crazy um, to to do this because he knew the kind of time and frankly, he's also a little selfish because I wasn't available to do all his running around because I was in some meetings. Um, but um, anyway, I just mainly just wanted to take the time to just say thank you very much because I I took about a week and a half off and that's a lot when you're in this position, but I felt fully supported by everybody and I needed to do that for my family and and thank my family as well for everything they've done. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not going to say anything because there's there's no way I could follow that.
Oh, no.
Yes, sir, you're up.
Chair members of the board, just a couple, a couple items I would mention. Our our housing office is offering a free workshop on managing your debt. It's Monday, March twentieth, eleven AM and six PM. It's a one-hour workshop will provide strategies for reducing debt and spring cleaning reminders for homeowners and renters. The eleven o'clock session will be at the Grove Community Outreach Center. Uh, the six PM session will be at the Williamsburg Regional Library and both are available in person or virtually. And then for more information, seven five seven two five nine five three four zero, again, seven five seven two five nine five three four zero. And then the our budget community meeting, my proposed budget will be out at the end of March, I think March twenty-seventh is the scheduled date. Uh, we have a budget community meeting scheduled for April sixth at four PM here in the boardroom. You can attend in person or it will be uh, broadcast through an episode of This Week in James City County, so you can watch it live. Where our Financial Management Service Director, Sharon McCarthy, and I will discuss our fiscal year proposed budget, answer any questions that our residents may have. Uh, and again, if attending in person, we'll be here in the boardroom at the Mounts Bay Campus, so or Facebook, our Cox Cable or or YouTube. And so if you have questions, you can call us or email community dot meeting at jamescitycountyva.gov. Then again, email community dot meetings at jamescitycountyva.gov, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, since this is no closed session and I know there's something we can agree on definitely, is it German until eight AM?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, yes, eight thirty, I love AM. The German until eight thirty AM on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three for the joint meeting located in room one twenty-seven in the Skylar Building, four one two North Boundry Street, Williamsburg, Virginia.
Striker.
Striker, what did I say?
Skylar.
Skylar, striker, it's in Williamsburg. Yeah.
We agree.
So moving, you better wear green.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, dear.
Mr. Dreisner?
I'll be pinching.
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson? Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Might need one of your green things.
I'll bring it extra.